Okay, it's a little after seven, so let's call this regular meeting, regular board meeting of the Silver Falls School District to order. Debbie can take no attendance.
No.
Okay. Please join me for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item of up for the night is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
No, salute.
Okay, how about a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up are our student representatives, Larissa Kesh and Olivia Myers. Come on up. Did I get your names right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm Olivia Myers.
And I'm Larissa Kesh.
And we are school board representatives from Silverton High School. We are members of ASP, the student leaders of the high school. We are here to inform you all about the sports clubs and other activities that Silverton community and the high school. We have a number of items to share with you today. First off, we have sports. The boys soccer, their record right now is 2-0. And their next home game is September 11th versus St. Helens at 4:30 p.m. Next is the girls soccer. Their record right now is 1-0. And their next home game is October 4th versus Corvallis at 4:30 p.m. Our football team is doing great. Their record so far is 2-0. And their next home game is September 14th versus Love Man at 7 o'clock. And our volleyball girls, their record is 4-3. Their next home game is September 11th versus North Salem at 6 o'clock. Next we have cross country. And their next home game is September 12th at the Oktoberfest invite at 4 o'clock p.m. Next is cheer team. The team, including three males this year, are mastering new stems and have learned around 45 different cheers. Our future business leaders of America have great success with the National FBLA Leadership Conference in Maryland Baltimore. They took six students who qualified at state in April. The six students represented Silverton against an average of 100 other students from different states and countries. All the students did fantastic, but their biggest successes were Ethan Hunter and Brian Sun with impromptu speaking and Helena Munoz with sales presentation. All these students made it to finals. Mr. Josh Craig is continuing to lead the key club this year. Key Club is the oldest and largest service program for high school students. Its goal is for students to gain leadership skills through serving others. Mr. Craig says his goal for Key Club this year is to get more involved on a local level with the school and the community as a whole. Jessica Newton, one of Silverton High School's self-help teachers, is advisor for the mental health awareness club. This is a new club to the high school. It is a student-like club that is working to eliminate stigma and empower students by educating our school community about mental health. One of the members of SHS's Fox/Scan TV crew and SHS student John Baldwin won the state competition, If I Were Mayor, in digital media. The If I Were Mayor competition allows students to share their creative, unique, and inspirational ideas about what they would do to positively influence if they were mayor. FFA, Future Farmers of America, are hosting Food for America at SHS on October 5th. Food for America is an educational program focusing on agricultural literacy in elementary schools and communities. FFA has four students that won at the state level in agriculture. And they will be attending the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis in October. Silverton FFA has also taken 11 more students to attend the nationals. So, homecoming is coming up. It's on the 29th. And pretty soon, we're going to be having a spirit week, which is the 24th through the 28th. Our dress-up days are Monday tie-dye, Tuesday twinday, Wednesday meme/vying day, Thursday picture day, and Friday is spirit day. And then next this month, we have a lot of events going on. And four of them are September 28th, the parade, which is at 4 p.m., the Future Frog Fair, which is at 5 p.m., the football game at 7 p.m., and then the bonfire after the football game. And the next day, on Saturday, September 29th, from 8 to 11, we have our homecoming dance. Thank you for your time, and we hope to continue connecting the Silverton community to the high school. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Yeah, good job, guys. Thank you. Okay, next up, we've got some visitors from the Silver Falls Education Association. They want to come introduce themselves to the board. I think you guys are all new, right? As members, as your leaders? Okay. And they want to introduce themselves to the board. So, please welcome Michelle Stadly. Is Mr. Patrick here?
Yes.
Okay.
He had marching band practice.
Okay. So, Michelle Stadly, Angie Miller, and Nancy Miller. All right.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you, you guys. We're really, really happy to be here and to get to introduce ourselves officially to all of the new board members. So, we just wanted to take a minute to share with you some of our goals for this year. We were able to share these goals with our membership during our in-service meeting, so they got to see kind of what we're working for and for this year. And...
So, our goals for the year, if you can see Rebel Wilson in there. It is not to be a rebel. Our first goal this year is to build relationships. We've noticed over the years that there has been a decline in members talking to each other and standing up for each other and supporting each other and having a presence shown in the community as well as having a strong presence with the school board and the administration. And so, our first goal and most important goal this year is to build relationships with our members, which we're really happy to see that we've got quite a few new members signed up. Members that their applications got lost last year, things like that happen. Building relationships with our community, hoping to get out and do more community outreach and just looking to let the community know what we do as well. And with you, the school board, we want to be able to let you know what we're doing and what we need from you as well. And with the administration, we've already started some conversations with Andy and Dandy, working on the language for what we have to do since the Janus ruling came down. So, there's lots to do this year, and we hope that we're off to a good start. And for our second goal, we feel that building trust and integrity is the path to honest communication and fidelity in professional relationships as well. So, our second goal is a commitment to that end with all the aforementioned people, school board, admin, and teachers.
And our final goal is to advance the wellbeing of our members. Obviously, that is the role that we've been elected to, is to advocate for our membership. So, some of the ways that we're doing that this year is to provide training for them. We want our building reps to be comfortable in their roles. We want them to understand what their roles look like. And so far, we've already provided a spring training this last year. And then several of us went to some summer trainings as well. And then we did a fall kickoff as well, just to get them geared up for the year through bargaining. And so, that's kind of where you guys come in as well and where we really want to build that relationship with you. So that when we're sitting across the table from each other, administration and school board, we're recognizing that we're all people and we all have common interests and common goals and are in it for the good of our students. And then, again, back to that communication piece with all of our stakeholders, our students, our members, you guys on the board, our administrators, and our community. And then, we want to reach out to our members regularly. We want to hear their voices and be able to express what they're thinking and what they need in their classrooms and be able to have a forum where we can bring that to you guys. And so, that actually leads me into my next point. As you can see, a common theme... Nope, there's not. A common theme in our three goals clearly has been communication, right? So, Mr. Patrick and I, so my vice president and I, we started out this summer to try to connect with each one of you and found out, we just wanted you guys to know what we're about, who we are, put faces to names, and share this information with you guys. And so, we found out that the Oregon School Board Association recommends that board members not meet with union leadership. And so, in respecting that, we wanted to come before you now in a little bit more of a formal way, just to get those messages to you and just to make that connection. And so, after hearing about that recommendation from the Oregon School Board Association, we wanted to find a way that we could respectfully communicate with you guys in a way that is something that is approved by them. And so, we think we found that method. So, OSBA recommends the formation of a labor management committee. And according to their policy, labor management committees create opportunities, but not guarantees, for resolving problems. They also provide a forum for communication, information gathering, research, rigorous debate, and joint problem solving. As this is a bargaining year and as SFEA Executive Board, as we are elected officials to represent the voice of our members, we would like to create this labor management committee with you, made up of three school board members and three union members, the goal of which would be communication and joint problem solving. We would like this committee to begin in October and commit to meet monthly until June, at which point in time we can assess the progress of the committee and either reaffirm, redefine, or rethink its usefulness. As your teachers and students are directly impacted by the decisions made by this board and by administrators, we believe it's in our best interest and the best interest of our members and students to have that direct line of communication with the school board. As elected representatives of our members, we would like our collective voice to be communicated by us to you. And this would be the form of that labor management committee. Since the formation of this committee is recommended by OSBA, we hope that you will consider the merits of our proposal and agree to meeting with us regularly. The Silver Falls Education Association is here on behalf of our teachers, all of whom are doing their very best to make this district a positive place for all of our students. All we want is a voice in the decision-making that directly impacts our students and each of us daily in our jobs. So, that's what we have for you. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to address you and to share with you our goals and this idea that we have for communicating better with you in the future.
Are there any questions for us about them?
No, I mean, I don't, I'll have to, you know, I'm curious as to what OSBA has about that, about, you know. And so, this is the first I've heard of it, so I'm curious, but I can't really comment on it, so.
Tom, maybe we can add this to a future agenda?
Yeah, I think so, Andy. Yeah. Andy, have you heard of anything about, you know, you've worked with them? Is there any information?
I have to check with OSBA specifically about an association and school board committee. We actually have a labor management committee right now that meets four or five times a year called the Teachers Forum. And it's administration and representatives from each of the schools in the district. It's actually part of the collective bargaining agreement that does just as Michelle has asked for, but it's specifically with administration, not with school.
We're not with...
And whether OSBA would, it sounds like there's some literature that I need to find, and I'd love to see that source. That way, at least when we follow up, we can fully find out. I know in the past, when there's been some questions about direct work with association members and the school board, OSBA has been very quick to recognize the intermediate piece, and that is that your role, not intermediate piece, excuse me, your role as an appellate responsibility. So, if there were matters that came to the board as a matter of decision-making or appeals from the association or from any organization within your employee rights, that you don't want to jeopardize that.
Yeah.
So, OSBA may have a recommendation about how to get around that.
Sure.
And then, I'll just lean on you to see what your wishes are.
That sounds good.
In my reading of that policy, they did list several different areas where labor management committees are recommended. One was for bargaining, specific instances of bargaining, like if there's a specific item that's been kind of tough, so coming together to problem solve that. And then another was just a general, a general labor management session, so. And I've never heard the forum being referred to as a labor management.
Yeah, its origin was intended for that purpose, so that there would be opportunities, scheduled opportunities for labor and management to put their heads together. Forum has, I think, evolved a little bit over the years, Angie's, where it's been kind of a feel-good opportunity, but distinctly with the intent of the forum was to help get in the middle if there are contract interpretation matters, if there are issues that can, let's say, avoid grievance. The forum was designed for that purpose.
Also, if you're interested in knowing of some other school districts who operate with a school board and union labor management committee, I know Woodburn, North Marion, Portland, and Eugene all have similar committees set up. So, you could do some investigating that way. That are set up just with the board and... I believe so. Oh, that's the information that I received, so. I guess the specific language on that would be good to know. Or it could be...
Yeah. Well, yeah, we'll have to get to specifics.
Yeah, we need to look into that. Labor management isn't, in the past, hasn't been a board role, so. That's why I'm just kind of a little surprised.
But it's an option. Clearly.
But it's something we should look at, something we need to look into.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll take a peek at it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, next up is some discussion items for the evening. First up is, we've got some budget committee vacancies. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, no, thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board? I think I know someone who does. Okay, let me read this out just for anyone else. Welcome to the regular business meeting of the Silver Falls School Board. We are glad you are here and welcome you to address the board at this time. Be certain to sign in before you present. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second audience with visitors will occur later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. Okay.
Good evening. Welcome to the first Monday of school. I don't know what your morning started out, but mine started out with a six-year-old who did not want to get dressed. But anyways, I'm Sarah Weitzman. I'm president of Silverton Friends of Music, and I just wanted to give you a little update about some whole things. I normally come to your July meeting and sort of give you a little yearly recap, but I was busy because we had a really robust summer with Silverton Friends of Music. It was really awesome. We put on concert series in the park that was super successful. We were able to highlight music education, and it was just super, got a ton of positive feedback, and we look forward to doing that in the future, hopefully on an annual basis. Also, we had some wins and losses. And then, it looks like it was reported to us that we got a little bit of a FTE bump at Robert Frost and maybe a little bit of a, not necessarily a loss, but a disappointing forecast at the middle school, I guess. And then, another exciting thing that happened though this summer was a parent who goes to one of our elementary schools that does not have music education reached out to us and asked us if we would consider doing a community children's choir. And so, we had a really robust, must remember the word of the day, conversation about it at our last board meeting because we really want to keep our focus on advocacy and how important we feel that Silver Falls School District is doing in music education and the equities and offering music education to our student population. But, our community really has this need for wanting a children's choir. And a lot of our community actually traveling to Salem to go to community children's choir. So, we talked about it, and we decided that we have the means to do it, and so, we're going to go and move forward with having a community choir, children's choir that we hope to start in October for the K-28 population. So, excited about that, and I hope to give you further updates about that. Also, welcome Jonathan. So, great to see you.
Appreciate it.
For the step up. Thank you. And just wanted to also let you know that Saturday, September 22nd, Silverton Friends of Music will again be sponsoring Music Day for the high school band and choir. And so, both the band and choir students will be out door knocking and asking for donations for the high school band and choir program, and that will be sponsored through Silverton Friends of Music. So, it's going to be a great year. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Anybody else?
Good evening. So, I'm Tila Nielsen, and I'm a parent and a teacher at Silverton High School. And I would just like to share with you some information about three of my colleagues that I've submitted letters to the board before and also to admin, but I thought it would be nice to bring some positive stuff about some people that work in our district that we're really fortunate to have. So, I'm just going to read it, so I'll stay on task here, on track here. Dear Mr. Blandos, Silver Falls Board and community members, I have the privilege of working with Kevin Ortega. Kevin was a new addition to our counseling department at Silverton High School last year. He has had years of school counseling experience, and we once again ended up on the receiving end of a wonderful colleague to join the high school community. Two words that instantly come to mind when I think of Kevin, above and beyond. As I mentioned, Kevin came to our building as a seasoned counselor. He came with a set of tools and skills, but in reference to his tools, I would add that he carries an open tool belt, willing to add new tools to support the staff and students here at the high school. He consistently goes above and beyond in his service to our students and their families. I have seen him pour extra hours of time into his tasks to do whatever he can to support and have the best interest of all our students in mind over ease and convenience. Mr. Ortega is incredibly genuine. Honestly, I would easily refer to Kevin as one of the most genuine people I know. This trait, as we know, goes a long way when working with students and parents. So often, our counselors work with our most fragile students, students in which trust is not easily obtained. Knowing they find a kind, caring, trustworthy advocate in Mr. Ortega is an amazing attribute that puts many parents at ease, knowing their child has someone with his level of integrity to support them at Silverton High School. Mr. Ortega also likes to have fun. He enjoys seeing the students at SHS engaged in activity and having a good time. He attends many school events, supporting his own kid to our students in the Silver Falls District, but also supports a myriad of other activities and students. He is often seen taking pictures or videos. He then edits to document memories for our students and staff. Speaking of fun, Mr. Ortega had a lot to live up to coming to the high school as Carson's dad. If you haven't met Carson Ortega, he would definitely be on the top of the people you need to know list. With that being said, and as much as I love Carson, Mr. Ortega has made a name for himself at the high school. I'm thankful to know him, to work with him, and to see the life-changing activity he brings to our students on a regular basis. I truly don't know of a person I would trust more with my own children and the many students here at the high school. He has so many kind words and a blessing to our district. I hope when you see Mr. Ortega in the halls or at an event, you take the time to meet him. Hopefully, Carson is with him, and you can meet him also. But also thank him for all the contributes, all he contributes to our school family. He is a life giver and a give to our community. The next one. Dear Mr. Blandos, Silver Falls...
I don't want to cut you off, but we're...
My time?
Yeah. Well, we're getting close, so I don't want, I can listen to good news all night long, but we do got to kind of maintain our policy, so.
Okay, so should I just come back? Or is it...
Well, I don't know, I mean...
I could do that, yeah. Is there another time?
Well...
I mean, another open...
You could give us a letter. Well, no, there isn't one tonight, you know, so we can't just extend.
Oh, okay.
I mean, could you just, could you just give us the quick version of the next one? Or do you want to come back next meeting, or?
You know, I think I will, I think I'll come back.
Okay.
I'm just going to give you Mr. Ortega's.
Yeah, there you go.
I think this is something that even though you guys receive, I think it's good for the community to hear it.
Yeah.
Because when it goes into your file, I'm not sure who gets that.
Yeah, and I, like I said, I don't, I'm like...
Yeah, I don't understand.
I feel bad cutting you off, but then, but so.
No problem at all, so I will just do one.
Thank you for doing that.
Did you email those to us?
No, I did not, but I will.
That would be great.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
But all people are talking.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thanks.
And reading them. Come each month.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, yeah, come on up. We'll just need you to sign in. State your name for the record.
Well, my name is Zoe Funk, and I'm here as a parent. Actually, I have three children in this school district, but I've never been to one before. This is terrifying, you guys. Welcome.
Welcome.
Trying to breathe, trying to breathe. So, I have a son in middle school, and recently, there was a choice to cut the elective, one of the electives for the students in middle school. And I just felt I needed to say something on his behalf as an advocate for my son. I know it's very difficult for him. He's in honors math, and he's in honors English, and he's in honors band, and he's invited to be in honors art as well. He's a very motivated, very good student. This year, he had to choose between whether he wanted to do art or do music. And that was really hard for him, and it was really hard as a parent to watch him struggle. I know that these decisions are made based on a lot of things that I probably don't have any idea about, but I thought it was important that you knew what the impact it had on the students, because I think that's something that should be considered for next year. For me as a parent, I feel like, you know, our students are going to learn to read and write, and they're going to learn to do their math to the best of their ability. But through their electives, I feel that's where they really get to shine. That's where they find their niche, that little special thing that makes them unique, that makes them shine in their community, that gives them, you know, a strong self-being, a strong self-concept, and a feeling of their individual importance in the makeup of this large mass of faces that go down the crowd. And I know for us, as a family of five with three children, we do all right, but it would be impossible for us to pay for individual art lessons or individual music lessons for all three of our children. It's just too hard. And so, it's important to me, looking at my son, but then also looking at the other young people in the community, his friends. You know, not all children are into scholastics. You know, not all kids are paper and pencil kids who can sit down and read. And for some students, the thing that makes them graduate, the thing that makes them show up, especially as they get older and start to get into high school, it's going to be that special thing. Like, they could be a straight D student and really suffer, but the reason why they stay in school and graduate is because they really love to play music, or they really love to draw, or they love to do drama. And I think it's these special opportunities that we provide for children where they can really shine and find who they are. Because in school, we are trying to educate them, but we're also growing community members who have a reason to be here, who have their own individual purpose. And so, like I said, I know there's a lot of reasons why we make these decisions, but I told him I'd speak on his behalf and on behalf of some of his friends and let you guys know that they were very disappointed that they had to make choices in what things they wanted to do this year. And they hoped that if someone said something, that you guys would consider that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did very well. Can you ask Andy for clarification about what the issue is?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, Andy, what was the, there was...
Yeah, I can't say with certainty. I was with Mr. Davis about that. I do think it was a reduction as a result of enrollment, I believe, in one of the major courses at Silverton Middle School, but any more detail than that, I can't share. Jennifer, you know?
Yeah, they moved from a seven-period day to a six-period day.
Okay.
So, the leadership team in that building discussed at length last year that those class periods for some of the math and science classes in particular were just too short at 42 minutes.
So, there's less time for the one elective.
One less.
Right. So, each class period is longer, so it's more like, it's not quite 50 minutes, but it's closer. How long is it?
It's actually 56 minutes, a regular class period.
Yeah. On a...
On a regular schedule.
On a regular Sunday.
It's not your day? I'm glad you clarified all of that.
Yeah.
So for middle school students, there's a class, there's classes mostly for 56 minutes. The core classes, science, math.
But on an early release day, we actually have the same amount of time we had on a normal day last year. So we're not losing nearly as much instruction. There was, there, I don't, we're probably inappropriately speaking now, right? It's like a group comp, I did it, I, it was my fault.
I'm learning things, go ahead.
It's very helpful. In sharing the seven-period day with the high school and sharing some of the staff, there were situations every time one of the building or another had a special schedule for an assembly or RIE or early release, anything really, it made the kids who went over from the middle school to the high school not be able to access those classes on that day. So there was a total of, do you remember how many days?
I want to say the grand total, counting all the hours, added up to about 51 class periods in the year that these kids were not getting their instruction.
So in revamping this schedule and trying to make them, so they're matched up with the high school for just the first two periods of the day and then on their own schedule. And they lengthened those class periods to be more age-appropriate for the high school so that they could get the instruction in that day. So unfortunately, the side effect of that, right, the unintended consequence of solving a problem, we've been talking a lot about that lately, is it reduced one elective for every middle school kid.
Yeah. Okay, all right, well, thanks for the explanation. Yeah, okay. Okay, would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, move on. Okay, now we'll get into some discussion items. We got some budget committee vacancies. Andy, you want to explain the process for how we'll fill, how we'll get those filled?
Yeah, just a quick reminder for the seven of you. In July, you postponed your, you postponed your budget committee selection to your September meeting, actually with the intent of selecting your budget committee members by your November meeting. That was due largely to the selection of a replacement school board member, who's on six. So with all that said, you have three budget committee members whose term is up this year. Those three individuals include Melissa Cyper-Braves, Kurt Metzger, and Jacob Clotfelter. Each of the three have indicated an interest to be reappointed to the board and your policy, DDEA, allows the board to reappoint. But the policy also requires that if they're interested in being reappointed, that they submit an application and allow members of the public to submit an application as well. So with all of that said, we will post on the website and make available information about the budget committee vacancies. And we'll follow the same process we followed in the past. I believe we opened it for three weeks or so. I'll have to check, double-check that. And then we'll put a deadline date, get those applications in front of you. And if there are multiple applications, then we'll go through some of the process that you did a couple of years ago where you would actually interview each person or get an opportunity to meet them and make a decision in advance. So that's quick, so.
Sounds good. All right, any questions for Andy?
Nope.
Okay. All right, next up, our 2018-19 Board Superintendent Working Agreement. Last works, well, we had Renee Sessler came down here. Our last work session went over that with us. She summarized the conversation and had some changes that she suggested for us. They were highlighted in blue. Does anybody have any questions or comments on these?
I do.
Yeah.
I think I mentioned to you before the meeting that I had a few questions.
Sure.
Or mentioned to you and Andy before the meeting that I had a few clarification or questions, just to make sure. So there is some language change or addition, I should say, under Meeting Operational Agreements, number seven. It has to do with cell phones, electronic devices during public meetings. And I just had a question about, the board recognizes all electronic communication during public meetings as a public record. Is that, did Renee say that that was something we had to mandate in there into that or into other?
Want to answer, Tom?
Yeah, I can't remember specifically, but it was just, it was just kind of-
It was just a discussion?
It was just kind of a discussion. It's just kind of one of those things that's propping up more and more people looking on their phones. What are they looking at?
Right, right.
You know, so-
Well, she did mention that they could be subpoenaed.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, exactly, so it's just kind of a clarification, just have them off. And we had, you know, we had a discussion where we all have families and sometimes we have businesses. I mean, I, at that training session, you know, I had my young son on the call line. You know, if something goes wrong, I need to, I need to-
Right.
Let him know, so. But, you know, so something like that arises, excuse yourself from the meeting, take care of it.
Oh, okay.
But as far as, and then I can't remember, what did it, Jennifer, you especially had the discussion because you keep a lot of your information on your phone. And I'm trying to figure out, how did we resolve that? Do you recall that? Because you were really spearheading that.
No, it just, it could be subpoenaed if I, you know.
It's just good, so, there you go. So just, I guess, be careful what you're using, what you're looking at, yeah.
Her point was if it's used, it could be subpoenaed. But theoretically, if it's not, it seemed like that would not be up.
You know, I think the key word there is communication. So in the case of, to the example you used, Jennifer, you use it as a reference to the district website or maybe take notes on your phone occasionally. And as far as communication is concerned, I think that's what Renee was referring to as a potential violation of law, simply because it is a public record if somebody is using their phone to communicate during a public meeting.
So with the, the language in here, board members will not communicate with elector unlet during a public meeting unless there is an urgent personal need. So are we giving, are we given a little bit of latitude on that? For example, like my husband is on call on Monday nights. You know, 90% of the time, he's usually in surgery. And there have been multiple times where my kids have texted me and said, you know, I've gone to Elijah's house to study, wanted to let you know. Because my kids check in with me to let me know where they're going. And I say, okay. And so is that something that I would need to excuse myself for? And would that be subpoenaed into, at some point? I mean, I'm just trying to get a little, a little language clarification.
I would like to think that a, like a quick K sent back.
Okay, great.
It would be okay, but if it, but if it requires a back and forth, just excuse yourself.
Okay.
I mean, does that sound reasonable? I mean, it seems reasonable, I mean, I'd like to think that.
I can't say with certainty. I think Renee was pretty clear that if a person is communicating in any way during, during a public meeting, that, that could be a public record. And that a court could say, board member, I need your phone and we need to view everything in it. So her comment was, if there's something of urgent personal need, it would be in your best interest to excuse yourself from the room. So there's no question from the public or anybody watching on television.
Okay.
Because somebody knows who you're texting.
No, exactly, so I just wanted to make sure, you know, urgent personal need, I mean-
Sounds like anything, according to Renee and the lawyers.
Right.
Virtually anything.
Okay, that's fine.
And Tom, I do remember she said regardless of the intent. So it didn't matter what the intent of the communication was, the fact that that device was used during a public meeting now opens you up for-
Potential.
Potential issues, which can be subpoenaed. Yeah.
Did she provide any documentation on that by chance?
No, she didn't.
She just came?
She just came and said it's becoming an issue with people, wasn't she just suggesting?
As technology arises. Because we were, you know, we were actually thinking about getting rid of the paper and using iPads. We, I remember we were discussing that when we decided to take on Board Book and put it online and we, you know, said, well, we could actually look at everything on an iPad in front of us.
Yeah.
So just food for thought for the future.
But that would be the district's iPad.
I know, but I'm just saying-
It wouldn't be, this is our personal phone.
You know, pretty type things in there.
And if they subpoena it because they want to see that you were-
Right.
That you were coordinating with your kids and where they were at.
Well, no.
That's fine, but you're gonna lose your phone for two weeks.
Right.
That's what she was getting at. That's what she was getting at, you don't, your phone is gone. And all the information you have, so.
Right, okay.
That's-
I think I just wanted, you know, urgent personal need, I'm like, well.
Sounds like an virtual.
I can hit a K.
I, your call.
Okay. Thank you for the discussion.
Yeah.
The second one, the couple more questions I have on communication agreements. Number six. Board members should listen to staff members and patrons, but should limit their response and guide staff member or patron to an appropriate venue. Yep. The board will not hear employment-related concerns, correct? The board supports the school administration before critical groups and individuals in the community. I, I'm wondering what the thought process was behind in adding that sentence.
I can see that.
It's pretty specific.
That was one of the standards in the board self-evaluation. That was one of the bullets underneath the standards.
So, I mean, yeah. So, you know, so an example of, you know, that would be, you know, if, you know, it's that standard where you're not supposed to, outside of the boardroom, you're not supposed to, if it's, if it's a decision you disagreed with, you still gotta kind of support the board decision.
Right.
You know, and you might get to say things, you know, I might say, well, it was a hard decision and I didn't approve, but this is what the board chose.
Right, yeah.
It's kind of, it was that.
So the board supports school administration, right, so we shouldn't have, oh.
And I, I think we struggled, I think Andy and I in our pre-board meeting, we struggled with the word "critical groups." I think there was a critical-
Well, that was my next one.
No, you can surely reword that any way you like, but Jennifer's correct. That is verbatim out of the board self-evaluation.
Yeah, I mean, critical, it doesn't mean because a group is, a group is being criticizing of us, meaning you have to defend the board, it just means a group.
Important groups.
An important group is a better term.
Important groups.
I guess, yeah, that would be a better word.
Is the intent behind that to limit sort of board members badmouthing administration sort of in inappropriate forms? I mean, is that the intent?
That's nested, isn't it?
I think that's why the standard is-
Is that what, that's really, yeah, because I didn't know.
Yeah.
To help maintain relationships.
You know, even if you're on the losing end of a decision, you might still be called on to explain the decision.
Right.
And so, you know, that's, that's that type of a thing, so. And that's what I think, but then by support, they didn't, I don't think the word is, you know, it doesn't mean you're, you, I mean, you're just willing to explain the board's position in front of various groups or board groups, so.
I thought it seemed vague, so that was my only feedback, because it just seemed-
I didn't know how to word it. We kind of just, I don't know the better way to, I mean-
Could you say the board supports the school administration before community groups and individuals?
That's good.
Community.
Because it's basically, because that's what we're talking about.
What's a critical group? I mean, is that a critical group or is that right there? You know, I mean, everybody's a critical group in my book when we're working for the public or-
So maybe, maybe-
So how about community?
So maybe before community groups and individuals, period.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, I like community.
I like it better, yeah.
I think it sounds a little more positive, proactive vocabulary in there.
Does that make sense, Andy? So it would read, the addition would read, the board supports the school administration before community groups and individuals.
Period. Or do you want "in the community"? Because you want "the community" twice and English doesn't, that doesn't go well with you.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound right.
That's right.
Does that read, seem to read okay?
We could do, the board supports the school administration before groups and individuals in the community.
I think the way Tom read it is good.
Okay? Okay?
All right.
And then one last one.
Yeah.
Number seven, recoloit. Recognize the role of the chairperson to speak for and about the board and to describe the board's process and positions. The new language is, in addition to that, is the board chairperson or superintendent will respond as appropriate to emails and other correspondence sent to the full board. So does that mean that none of us can respond to an email that's sent from a community member at all, positive or negative? A positive email or?
I think that this came up because we had an email.
Okay.
And it was something that probably needed a pretty speedy response. Not speedy, but you know.
Yeah.
And we didn't know-
It was addressed just to us, right?
Yes, it was addressed just to us.
Not Andy.
And specifically, like, there was, you know, Jonathan's new, he doesn't know how we handle that.
Oh, right, yeah.
He asked, we didn't know how we handled it and there-
Will we send it to our superintendent?
Well-
Don't we?
In this case, that was, yes, we did. We did do that, but, but Tom and Andy talked and the decision was that Tom, it would be more appropriate for Tom to respond.
Yeah.
So it's more of a protocol, how we, how we work things out when we get correspondence like that?
Mm-hmm, yeah, because it was, it was a question that was best resolved by, from a Franny. It wasn't for us, it wasn't for an email. But, but the question of, we never did address this topic, which is Shelley's question. Can, can an individual board member respond? Typically, we're-
I think you can as long as you CC everybody, but I think that's the agreement that we're trying to make here, is that the primary, the person that we rely on to do that is the board chair.
Yeah.
So there was a positive email sent, or, you know, an email sent from a student. And lovely, she took time to do that, she thought about that. And I think it would be very appropriate to respond, "Thank you very much for sending your email, we appreciate it." Shelley, you're a board member.
We talked about that at the meeting.
I think, oh, okay, and that's a no-go?
No, well, the, what Renee said is that it would be the same, that the board chair would be responsible for responding to that in a written, handwritten letter, since that was like, well, not handwritten letter, but you know, not an electronic letter, but snail mail. So same, same protocol that the board chair would respond.
Okay, so it would be inappropriate for Shelley to respond to?
I don't know if it's inappropriate.
I don't think it is either.
I don't either.
I don't think it's inappropriate, but it's just like-
The key is who's responding on behalf of the board? I think that's the key, right?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So if she responds, that's one thing, but that's not an official board response at that point.
No. You're the one who does that.
Okay, got, yeah.
And we rely on you to do that.
This is the official response of the board. But it's not an appropriate for me to respond, to say, "Thank you for sending your email."
No, that's, I think it's fine.
Right?
Well, in that case, so, in that case, well, I don't know. Andy told me once, when, when we got an email to all of us, that I said, well, can I respond? And he said, well, if you CC the other board members. Well, how do you do that in a snail mail? That was the question.
How did snail mail get into this?
She did not, she sent that letter with a piece of paper.
Oh.
So you couldn't respond to her unless you wrote a letter. And then are you CCing the whole board?
Jennifer, real quick, so I guess maybe I kind of lost a little bit here. So maybe we have two issues, but let's say in the case of electronic correspondence, where we receive an email. I think the intent and what was given by the OSBA was, it's, it's appropriate to be cordial and acknowledge the letter. And then say, look, for any additional official correspondence, then we pass that on to Tom and then Tom will then go ahead and keep board continuity. Now, maybe in the case of a one-off where there's a handwritten letter and you wanted to feel maybe compelled to respond, maybe there's a way we can scan and upload an email to all the board. Or there's gotta be maybe a process for one-off, but I think it's a rare, that's a rare nature.
Well, we got that email in our board.
It wasn't an email, though, I don't think.
It was scanned in.
It was scanned in.
Right, okay, so I didn't know it was handwritten.
Well, it was handwritten, but it wasn't, it wasn't like we could just click, reply, and reply to her.
Right.
Right.
I guess, I guess the difference is, is I'd like to respond to a community member who sends an email, who takes the time and effort to send it in, that sends it in to us, and I'd like to respond, "thank you for sending it."
As long as you're not speaking for the board.
But I'm not, no, and I wouldn't do that anyway, because I don't think that that's my place to do that.
Perfect.
I'm not the whole board.
And then there's, I don't see any problem with that at all.
So I just wanted to make that distinction of, "thank you very much for sending it in, I appreciate you taking the time to do it."
Yeah.
And acknowledging.
Yep, perfect.
Okay, so, the board chairperson will respond as appropriate to email to the correspondence sent to the full board.
So do you feel you need to, we need to add some language in there, for your example?
Well, I feel we need to be a little bit clear, that way, a little more language. So the board chairperson or superintendent will respond as appropriate to emails and other correspondence sent to the full board.
But it says "as appropriate," and I, the intent of that...
As appropriate.
The intent of this is, if there's a question, if somebody emails with a question about something, or a policy question, or a question about a building or something like that, then it's appro, then I think that's what this is talking about. It's not just talking about saying, "thank you for sending your email," or whatever.
Right, okay.
So I think the "as appropriate" part is, clears that up.
So we have a little latitude on the appropriate.
Yeah, so, in the umbrella, yeah. And the umbrella of appropriate is appropriate official communication.
Okay, so we have a good umbrella.
Or, Paul would just respond, "thank you," he would take care of all of us.
Right.
And you wouldn't have to send an individual thing.
But I like to do that, too. I mean, people come to me, and I like to thank them for coming, too. So, I feel that's my responsibility, too, as a public member of the community, so. Okay, great, if we have a little latitude on the word "appropriate," then I'm good with that.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
So I have one more as well.
Yeah.
Is there a "by when"? I mean, so the whole, part of what drove this was the timeliness. And it doesn't really talk to how long, so if somebody sends us a question, a valid question, a good question, or whatever, even an invalid question, we owe them a response, right? And so, I'd like something in this statement with some kind of a timeline, so that our policy indicates we'll respond within a period of, I don't know what you guys think that period should be, but I think it should be in the statement. I would argue a week seems very reasonable.
It seems appropriate, not in the words. Yeah, does that, I mean, is that something, anybody else feels?
I like that idea.
I don't...
Just because it's not sitting out in the cloud for three weeks, or, you know, and it responds quickly.
Yeah, I get busy, I get busy.
But you do get busy, you're, you're out, and you might not be able to respond.
So the only suggestion that I have of that is that, that there may be the occasional time where you may not feel like a response is appropriate. And so if you lock yourself into a week, that's where the word "as appropriate" came in, as an...
As appropriate, well, you leave that in there, "we need as appropriate."
As appropriate, I think, from my perspective, anybody gives, while it's vague, somewhat, Jonathan and I agree, I think that was about the other one, but it does lend us up a little bit, but this one, it allows some, some interpretation. Because you, you may receive something that is repetitive, same message over and over and over again, multiple emails in a, in a week, I mean, it's a rarity, but it has been known to happen. Is every one of those warrant a response within five days? I, I don't know, I think that's for you to struggle with a little bit, but I think there's some, maybe some validity to that.
I mean, if it's, I mean, I don't think it's ever been a problem.
I think we should, I think we should just leave that to the, to the chair and the superintendent to decide.
Generally, I call you very quickly, or you call me Tom, and it's me.
Right.
Yeah, when I was chair, Andy was on stuff, just like that, all the time, so.
Yeah.
I think, I don't think there needs to be a time limit, like Andy said, some of them might not warrant a response, sometimes somebody might be out of town, and that's one of my pet peeves about text and email anyways, everybody thinks they need to respond just like that. And it's not a conversation, so, you know, you got a little leeway, so.
Yeah.
That's just my own personal thing, I don't know why I brought it up, but...
I get it.
That's my excuse. No, I think that should be up to the interpretation of the superintendent.
Yeah, and I think that kind of...
That's why we have a superintendent.
And it follows, that is under the umbrella of appropriate, an appropriate time response, an appropriate level of response. So I think, I don't think we really, have a problem with it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I can look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Any working agreement? You have changes in?
Yeah, we can make those and send those out, send action items later on this evening at the board meetings.
Okay, perfect, perfect, all right. Okay. Board meeting protocols, that was another thing that we talked about with Renee. We were mainly just talking about the comment cards.
Is this this, the board meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, so there was, so this is not, let's see, this was not, yeah, so this is not an action item for tonight, but we were gonna work on, a lot of it had to do with, well, not a lot of it, is to try to streamline the process a little bit. We talked about getting rid of one of the audience with visitors, she, Renee said this, I don't think she's ever seen a district that has two, it's not that, you know, you can do it all at once. She thought that might streamline things a bit. She had a couple of different statements for the...
Can I talk about that?
Yeah, one thing at a time, very good.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, I was thinking about this, and so the whole point of our discussion was really to become more efficient as a board, and effective during our meetings, and the idea of eliminating one of the public comment sections, I'm not averse to. One thing that does concern me, though, as I thought about it, was what if a community member wants to make their comment after board discussion? So like, if we just, if you look at our current agenda, the audience with visitors or the public comment period comes before the discussion items, and if that person making the public comment wanted to impact our decision-making, they might wanna hear what we have to say first, and then make their comment, so I don't know if we wanna consider flip-flopping that, putting an audience with, or a public comment time after the discussion items, so that there could be that opportunity.
So are you talking about taking away number five, or, I mean, I'm sorry, taking away number five, the audience with visitors at the beginning, and just making it like, at the end, number nine?
Lumping that in with number nine.
Oh, well, I think that's up for discussion, apparently.
Well, yes, it is.
Well, that's my question, is, I like, I like having the, I like your thought process on the audience with visitors limited to discussion and action items, because we do have audience, you know, when, when they see what's on the agenda, you know, they might have something to say after our discussion. And I think it's important for transparency and communication, that we keep that open to our community.
I guess my suggestion would be that it would be after discussion items.
Right.
So moving number, so moving, like, on tonight's agenda, you're saying, item number nine would be right after discussion items, then?
I wouldn't, well, I assumed that nine is what we were eliminating, and flip-flop five and six.
Yeah, no, I follow what you're saying.
Oh, so do...
Yeah.
You've got one audience, and it occurs right after discussion items.
Right, that's, right, but, but they can, they can bring up anything they want, discussion items?
Yes, anything.
Anything, okay.
So it wouldn't just be limited to discussion items?
Right, correct. It's still, it's still open.
Right.
So the community can say the piece.
Okay.
There's a related item that I had a question or a comment about, which ties, I think, into Jennifer's point, which is, if we limit people to speaking who have filled out a card prior to the start of the meeting, you eliminate your point about, you know, having comments to what we discuss, right? So, at that point, you've kind of short-circuited that process, and my recommendation was to move that point up to the beginning of wherever that falls in the agenda. They could fill it out right now while we're talking, and pass it up, or whatever, somehow we could facilitate that. It would still be the same process, but it could still be discussed, it could still be selected to be, you know, listened to or not. I mean, those other things we talked about could all be, still happen, but I think if you limit it to the beginning, I mean, some people might not even be able to get here for logistical reasons, till five minutes after it starts.
Yeah.
Have you limited them as well, right? I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud here.
Well, I only, I thought that the benefit of doing the public comment card would be that the chair would have a chance to formulate a message about board role, or superintendent's role, a little, so there'd be a little bit of time to formulate something, so there'd be that education piece, but I agree that that is a little sticky with what you're, what you're saying, so, yeah.
Yeah, that was just my biggest concern with, with sort of how it was...
So would that even be feasible, to say, "oh, everybody pass their comment cards up, it's time for that"?
I, I thought about that, and I just, I just kind of thought, maybe it's really a solution that's looking for a problem. I don't think we would struggle with it that bad. I mean, I really don't, I think it's just one more thing, and I think a lot of folks could perceive it as limiting discussions.
Well, I also think that...
The comment card, yeah.
I also, when I, when I saw this, I'm like, it's, I didn't want it to be another hoop that people have to jump through to get their voice heard.
Yes, exactly.
And that's, I'm, I'm not in favor of that. So, I mean, I, but I get the public comment card, because sometimes I feel, when we do have visitors that come and talk, you know, like, you know, Sarah is here often, Sarah Weitzman talking about Solitude and Friends of Music. You know, she, she tells us things, or she, she shares information, or just if a parent comes and shares general information, we don't have a lot to respond, like, we're going, "okay, thank you for coming," you know, and it's, and it's up in the air, like, there's an answer that's up in the air, you know, it's in the cloud, like, "okay, well, thank you," and they're maybe looking for some feedback or something from us. I saw that this is a positive to respond to, to be able, for you to respond, so if they had something written down, and you had that...
Yeah, you would, you would know, yeah.
You could say, "oh, okay, just talking about this and this as well."
You can be prepared.
You know, Miss Weitzman, we're da-da-da-da-da. Yeah, so there's an actual response.
It would, it would help facilitate that, but in general...
I think it's still another hoop.
It is, and, you know, Renee, she said, as far as people presenting to the board, it's, you can give your opinion, but for the most part, you're not gonna get a response, because it's just kind of, "thank you for the information, and thank you for saying the piece," and...
Right.
Moving on down the road, you know...
So when, when parents come here, or community members come here, they're coming for a reason. But what, you know, they're, they're coming to us to let us hear something.
Right.
You know, we direct Jennifer, curriculum may be Jennifer Hannon, we direct it to our superintendent, saying, "where do we go from here?" Our superintendent, you know.
Yeah, that was...
I really think that that's the line.
Yeah, when there's, when there's the rare occasion, when we had everybody here who could just answer that specific question, and just clear it up.
Right.
You know, but, but for the most part, we're not gonna be able to give them a response to their input, because we haven't had, this is all our first time hearing this information, and generally, it's just kind of a, there's not much we can do with it.
So the previous conversation that we were having, when Jennifer Hannon was talking, and then we had Michelle, it was, it was very healthy, useful, fruitful information for everybody in this room. It was healthy.
Hmm, agree.
And so, while I think that might be a little bit out of what we're supposed to be doing, or what our real role is, I suppose, I still like it, I mean, it, we can mold this district, you know?
Yeah, I, I'm almost thinking that, that, you know, the, well, we had lots of ideas at the work session, but, but if anything, I just can't, but I don't, like I said, I don't, I kind of just got, I kind of soured on the comment card, but I thought just combining the two, audience with visitors, it might be, it might, you know, it might be a good first step, but as far as everything else, I really didn't need any other change, that's kind of what I had.
On my behalf, I don't want to cut you off.
No, go ahead.
Just for the record, the reason I don't say much at these meetings is, if someone comes to the board, they've thought about this for who knows how long. And like you said, you just can't give an immediate response.
Right.
So that's, hence the no-comment.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, you don't wanna just hurry up and give a comment.
Right. Yeah, and you step in inadvertently.
Yeah, so you need to be able to think about it, process it, and then, you know.
Right.
Right.
You know, also, too, one of the first things we learned when we became board members is to understand, this is not a public meeting, it's a, it's a meeting in public, so, we're here to listen, we're here to find out what the concerns are with, with whatever issues are out there, and then make sure the appropriate channel has a chance to digest, and then formulate a response, but it's not an open discourse, unless there may be that rare opportunity where they're able to maybe clear something off again on a one-off situation, but it's really a slippery slope, and we do have to adhere to public meeting laws as well. So that's important.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, like, it was uncomfortable for me to have to cut off that, like, I can't remember the nice lady's name, who was trying to cheat us, she was giving me, I'm like, "it's three minutes, we can't, we gotta stop it."
Right, so if we don't do the comment card, I guess, for me, the reason why I was considering it is, is to try to standardize our response when we have public comments, so maybe we, I don't know if you guys noticed, but I worked real hard today to talk just to Tom during that time, and even asked Tom to ask Andy something, because I think everything needs to flow through Tom during that time. We did have that little, you know, exchange, which was helpful, but, I don't know, I'd like us to try to follow the protocol, and try to keep our response consistent, and not give some public comment, you know, something, and not others, it's just, I don't know, it feels awkward to me, so...
Well, we kind of stopped, well, it, it kind of stopped, I believe that Jennifer said, "are we stepping," and I just said, "converse away," because we're learning, so, you know, I mean...
Oh, that was fine, I don't have a problem with that.
It works.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, but just in general...
Yeah.
If we can be consistent about how we respond, or actually don't respond to that, and, and also, you know, that idea of, some things aren't our role, some things are our administrative role, and how we communicate that, I guess, is something we can continue to work on.
Well, that's something that I saw that was useful for the public comment card, was, you know, if somebody had a topic that wasn't really something that we, you know, can answer for them, we direct it to our superintendent.
But you can do that after, you could do that, you could do that without the public comment.
You're right, yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just trying to do the...
I know, when Renee was talking about the public comment card, she was, she related that a lot to when she was on the board in, I forget where she was on the board, somewhere up Portland area, in a big district, and, you know, that might not be something that works for us.
Right.
And so it might, to me, it seems a little cumbersome, it just seems like something else for the chairman to have to sort through, and there's a lot to sort through when you're sitting in Tom's chair. And there's a lot to, you know, a lot of things you kind of have to manage, so. And one of our goals is review school board meeting protocols and practices, and it says we don't have to complete it till February 1st.
It's a suggestion.
So I would, I would, well, I know, but I would suggest if we wanna, if we wanna start by, you know, dropping the audience with visitors times down to one time later in the meeting, like Jennifer talked about, I mean, that's a good place to start, and we can keep reviewing the other stuff, and as we, as we start getting more public comment as the year goes on, we can talk about, if it starts to get a little unmanageable, sometimes we can talk about how to work on that.
I also like your idea of having it at the end as well, because that might give people an opportunity to come late to the meeting, and still be able to speak on...
Well, yeah, if we're only gonna have one, it has to be later in the meeting.
Yeah, right, so I think that is better for people to...
Yeah, so I, you know, so that's, that's a, are we in agreement of, just having one audience with visitors later in the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I am.
That's a change we can make, and we'll, we'll talk about the public comment card.
Nobody's sad about the comments, but thank you that you...
Yeah, yeah, exactly, you guys worked hard on those, but it's a little cumbersome. Yeah, I think it's one more thing. Okay, next up, 2018-19 draft district goals. Well, Tim's already commented on the one, we had the, we had the board protocol, the, you know, we guys, we gotta renew our strategic visioning plan.
So we have, we have district goals, we have board goals, we have, our superintendent has his goals. Do, do we have board goals listed on here?
Let me clarify, I put that in an email to the board, so the district board goals and board goals are the same.
They're the same.
Oh, okay, I must have, I didn't see that clearly. Okay, I'll mark up my board goals, question mark. Okay, so these are board, okay, well, give me a minute.
I think they're good, we have to keep working on this strategic visioning plan, and that's going to be a big thing this year with the renewal coming up. The board meeting protocols, we've talked about that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the visioning plan has been working great, and we got a completion date here of June 30th. Lots of time to work on that important document.
Quick question for you guys.
Yeah.
Jennifer, and correcting if I'm wrong, but I remember you saying something to the effect of, "We should try to make a board goal or a district goal of ours to getting a music curriculum or looking at that."
Oh, that was, that was part of the superintendent review, is to talk about feasibility.
Oh, okay. That just stuck in my head, is making it a goal for our district.
So number three, Renée's brought up the applied practices which support district planning and decision-making through the lens of educational equity. So number two and number three kind of follow up on our recent trainings. And I know we've started the work, really, for both of those, number two and number three already. I, this kind of, Renee talked about this last time, about the last time that we set goals, there was one of them that I felt I wasn't really our work so much, and I kind of feel that way about number one, two, I mean, it is our work, but Andy's going to do all that for us. We're going to be there, we're going to participate, and we are, it is us directing him to do it, but that's going to happen. Two and three are a little harder for us, I think.
Well, and I think last year, we had reaching out or having our board meetings out at community schools, which I thought was great.
And we're continuing that.
Yeah, that's ongoing.
We don't have to decide on these tonight, right?
We do, we don't.
There's no requirement that you decide on these tonight. If I can chime in, Mr. Chairman, I think the sooner the board can identify their goals for the year, the sooner they can get some direction related to this, and I heard a couple of you comment on this, and this is saying, "These are suggested, these are culmination of crafted by me of what I've heard over the last few months, most specifically with the training areas that are within the board's scope, and also give some definition to where your priorities are for the year." So if you have other suggestions, again, it's going to take the majority of the board to give the head nod to, "Yeah, other suggestions as well," then I think you need to have a discussion about that. Otherwise, this is, the public engagement was a very good goal last year, Shelley, you surely renewed that one. You're going to have more rural school meetings again, and public engagement will be an active part of your strategic visioning plan as well, and so we should truly merge those into one. I would encourage your approval of board goals by early in your regular meeting in October, just to give you some direction.
We could talk about them again in our work session.
Okay, so we do have that listed as an action item, so you want to pull that off?
Oh, we do?
Keep talking?
No.
Its phrase is consideration.
Consideration, so.
So.
Oh, consideration, yeah.
Okay.
Touch on the board.
I do like the idea, since y'all assigned Tom and I to work on the equity definition, I like the idea of number three because we've already kind of started the work and we, I think, got some good momentum. I think the strategic visioning plan is more important than board protocols, maybe at this point, I think, obviously, we just had the discussion, I think those are important, but.
Yeah, the board protocols looks fairly easy, fairly simple, but the visioning plan is going to be, the visioning plan looks like, like you said, Jennifer, it's going to be a lot more cranny, but as far as the educational equity one, well, it's probably going to be a little bit more work for us.
Commissioner.
So I like this, but if we want to put this off for another meeting and keep talking about these, that's fine.
The visioning plan is a, I mean, these are district goals and board goals, what's more important is a board goal than the visioning of the district, you know? And granted, we may not be doing a lot, some of the like work, but that, it's our, that's one of our jobs, is to direct the vision for this district and where we're headed.
I see.
So I think we need to keep that one, that's something we need to, as far as I'm concerned, that's something that always needs to be in front of us.
Yeah.
And the things that we're even doing up here, how is that relating to our district?
Was there something about facilities, didn't Lauren come and talk about? I remember him, that we were at the Silverton High School having a meeting, and he presented, and he said, "We need to look, we need to get facilities looked at again."
There's.
Is that?
Well, we need a long, yeah.
He's the committee.
Yeah, it's on the horizon, what's your?
He's not the goal.
It is, yeah, we have until the end of next year, actually until early fall 2019, to have your facility assessments completed and organize your long-range facility plan. So that's also scheduled for next year, slated for next year. Your board actually had a request from a community member, and I responded to that community member, that we have the long-range facility plan in place by spring break, sent a copy to each of you, and so that's in the works. We have two grants from the Department of Education, one for $30, one for $25,000 to help assist with both of those processes.
Okay, so you'll keep us on track?
I will keep you on track, and my comment, Ms. Chair, is that, you know, I think Shelley brings up some good examples, is that there are potentially hundreds of items that you could identify as goals for the year, and facilities is one of them. So similar to what we do as administration, how we work with teachers, it doesn't put any of the significance of anything else aside, but it helps, in your case, to identify to the public what one of your most significant priorities are for the year. And so if it's strategic visioning plan, or protocols, or equity, and that's what your action will ultimately result in, a year later. The last thing that I'll share with you is that there's no magic number. In fact, if we even receive recommendations from others in the past, the board limit itself to one goal for the year, because that's where your focused efforts could be. But two is not out of reason, three is even not out of reason, but I think the more goals you have, the more watered down they become.
Well, I like these as they are, and I'm perfectly ready to vote on them, but do we think, do people feel we need some more discussion on them?
I agree with Andy, I'd rather have two than three.
Okay.
I'd vote for number one and number three.
I'm fine with that, because to me, number two is just normal procedure, it's just an issue to come up and have to deal with.
That's right, I mean, that doesn't preclude us from doing anything on number two.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to take care of that anyway, so. Okay, is everybody okay with crossing out number two?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Got some head nod, or you're ready?
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're talking about two goals, number one and three, anybody, any changes? Do we want to just put this off for another meeting, or, I like them as they are.
I think they're fine.
They're fine as well.
You need that, okay, all right, there we go. So let's, we'll have it as an action item later. Okay, board calendar, anybody get a chance to make sure their vacations don't impact?
Please note the rural school sense.
Yes, yes. It looks fine, anybody have any comment on it?
No, thank you for putting those in.
Yeah.
So we're going to visit Victor Point, Adam, and Scott Smith.
Okay, any input on that? Oh, Shelley?
No, he's saying.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any other items that need to discuss? Okay, move on, administrative and staff reports. Andy is going to talk to us about the first week of enrollment and your superintendent calls.
Yes, thank you, I'll begin with the first week enrollment and purpose this by saying that we are literally just a few days into the school year, so these numbers are fluid, they are really fluid, especially at our larger schools like high school. However, at this point in time, we're overall about 50 kids up across the district. It's interesting to note, at least at this point, that usually your rural schools are flat, are actually slightly dropping in enrollment, and keep in mind that rural schools have a tendency to have more peaks and valleys simply because of their size. As an example, Bee Creek is down 23, but we just approved a couple more transfers in Bee Creek today, so my sense is that number will hit 300 before we know it. Similarly, I was a little, well, not similarly, I was a little surprised at a drop in enrollment at Mark Twain Elementary, but I also know that Greg Cox has not approved any transfers, especially at kindergarten level. And so this is not, I can't give you any reference to transfer numbers at this time, we'll have a much deeper conversation after the numbers are finalized for your October 1 enrollment, you'll have a full historical data to chew on and compare to, and we'll discuss more transfers at that time. But I am a little attentive to the numbers at the middle school, which are 470, and at Robert Frost, which is 430, those buildings are not at capacity at those numbers, but they sure are getting closer, and we want to be attentive to that. So with that said, we'll have more for you after October 1st. And then each of you received a copy of my proposed goals for the year, Tom and I had a good conversation early in the week, and I would gladly take any feedback or input that you have related to those goals. There is some similarity to what appears to be the goals that you're going to have as a school board for the year, and so I'll accept any feedback from you at this time for the comment, and real quick, I just want to share. For the sake of the public, the, I do include a strategic visioning plan, as Jennifer suggested, but I also put some description of activities in there that are much more specific to me, so I know the board has suggested that some of my reports have a little bit more strategic planning flavor to them, and I think that's entirely appropriate. And also work with Jennifer Hannon and Danny Stevens, and Dean, if that mattered too, and the principals on additional instructional opportunities within the school district, especially in the classrooms. The second one is specific to educational equity, it's similar to one last year, but it also aligns with that of the board formulating educational equity definition and belief statements for the school district. I also put in there a bullet point because I, and I know Tom influenced me on this, and I've heard a little bit of interest by others, and as it relates to equity to, I'll read this verbatim, "I praise the efficacy of converting Mark Twain Elementary School and Robert Frost School to K-5 grade configurations, which could be a pretty significant task, especially when you explore and do some research around that with the volume that is, and then report back to you as a board." That's ultimately going to be a board decision if it happens at all, and we want to make sure that you're fully informed.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for adding that, that's a, yeah. Yeah, they look, yeah, they look good, like I said, and Andy added that, because that was a, oh, it was that committee, they recommended looking into that, and I thought that, I thought that has merit, so, but we'll see what you come up with.
Andy, I think they're very responsive to the things that we've talked about, and they look really comprehensive, so thank you for your thoughts on that.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, comments? Okay, moving on, Steve Nielsen for the financial report.
Yes, Steve? Tonight we have the general fund statement for both July and August, this is combined statement. As you know, we don't have a lot of transactional activity in the first few months of the year, but we do receive 25% of our state school fund revenue in July and August, a double payment in July, and then a single payment in August, so revenues are close to 20% received already, corporate taxes appear up in November, expenses are light until we hit September here with everyone back, with our first payroll, with everyone here. So only 5% of client expenditures through the month of August, but that will start picking up. And just as a reminder, the state school fund revenue includes the charter school, state school fund revenue as well, which then gets passed through as an expense down in the instructional expenditures under the purchased services line, so that's why that number would be higher, because they also receive 25% of their monies, so it comes in as a revenue and taxes here as an expense, so. And then the other area to note would be the under support services, the 600 objects, we've already spent 87% there, and that's because we pay our property casualty insurance coverage pace in July. It hits right after that, so most of those expenditures are incurred right after that. Anyway, those are the highlights for this month, the schools really don't have much activity at all, so we'll start releasing a school statement for the monthly activity of September as well as an all-fund statement.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Steve? All right, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, summer school report with Nancy Griffith and Greg Cox.
All right. So Nancy and I job-shared summer school, that's summer school in my career. So I'm going to start off with, we're going to divide and conquer here a little bit, so I'm going to go with middle school, and then Nancy will follow up with high school. Base format and schedule, and you have all this information in the report, the base format was free breakfast and lunch offered for all students. Daily schedule is 8 o'clock to 1:15. Live period scheduled for middle school students with three core classes, English Language Arts, Math, and Social Emotional Learning, which was delivered by counselors in the district. We actually had three counselors that job-shared that, so one counselor stayed on and actually delivered instruction in the classroom, and then one counselor helped to meet individually with students and focus also on those incoming ninth graders, and kind of prepping them a little bit, and talking a little bit about what that transition from their K-8 building or Silverton Middle School looked like heading into the high school, so to try and prepare them a little bit. And then every child got two electives, so our elective options were CTE, which was kind of a survey, I think he, I think he had some medals in there, there was, they actually took some from mechanics, they actually bought some RC remote control cars that were gas-powered remote control cars, and they could break them all the way down, had some kind of see-through portions of the engine so they could take a look at what was actually happening, and they could put them all back together, and they could drive them, so that was pretty neat. Some safety, obviously, in there, but just kind of providing some opportunities for students to give them a look at what CTE courses were offered at the high school. And then we had a job-share, which was art and first aid, two weeks with art classes and two weeks with first aid, and the students received their first aid CPR card, and then video tech, just giving them some computer hands-on. Enrollment attendance, so incoming eighth graders, ninth graders, for eighth graders, there were, we invited 34 and 30 showed up. For incoming ninth graders, we actually had invited 22, and six additional students showed up, so we were 28 total.
Six of them.
Well, we ran, kind of, at the end of the school year, we ran kind of a survey to the K-8s and had principals talk to, you know, targets and those students who would benefit from summer school, and some of them didn't sign up, and some of them did, and of those few, once summer school hit, we had a few parents call and say, "It would be a great idea if little Johnny came to summer school," and here he comes. So we had, we had six of those, we had six of those, so. Of those incoming ninth graders attending, 23 students received half a high school credit titled summer school, and so it gets them off to kind of kick-start their high school career. We completed a student survey, we asked a few questions, and you have some responses there, 80% of the students responded that they enjoyed summer school, 20% obviously said they did not. When asked why, responses included, "They enjoyed the specific classes and meeting the people, helped me prepare for high school, teachers were great, kept me busy during the summer, I liked the format of a shortened school day, liked ending early to have the rest of my day open." Why not? A lot of reasons you guys would probably, would probably not want to go summer school either, is missing time for friends, free time during summer, and then some personal reasons. Couple of suggestions to take back, maybe for principals during the regular school year, were art classes, so additional art time, and then actually, students actually said time with counselors, additional time with counselors they would like at their regular schools. Number three was suggestions for elective courses, so kind of asking students what they would be interested, what kind of student, you know, classes students would like to take, so computers, computer programming, video tech, kind of was all under technology, CTE courses, art, PE, first aid, social emotional learning, and they actually specifically wrote down on the survey, social emotional learning, so they were listening, I think, during school. They talked about counseling services, science, culinary arts, Spanish as a foreign language, business, and theater. So those were some of the elective courses that students wrote in their surveys. And then suggestions for improvements in summer school specifically, and they said more elective options for students, getting the opportunity to actually choose what elective they would like to take, rather than they were based on the numbers, we put them into a course and, you know, hopefully gave them. We put them into a course and hopefully gave them something new, but they would like to select their electives. They felt like passing time was too long. This was kind of a logistical thing. It was summer, so we gave them a little bit of time, so they didn't feel rushed going to class if they maybe had a little bit of time to socialize. They didn't like that. They said, "We want less time." And actually, staff said the same thing, so that was interesting. Hands-on activities. They talked about physical education or some activity during the school day, and talked about math support and individual skills. So they, basically in the survey, a couple of students said they identified help that they needed with math, and they would have liked additional help on those specific skills. And then another suggestion for improvement again was more time with counselors. That was specific to what students requested. Teacher survey, so positives, kind of positives and areas of improvement. They loved the small class sizes, gave them some quality time with students, splitting the eighth graders and ninth graders up so that they weren't combined in terms of their classes, and then also keeping the middle school students separate from the high school students, so summer school had a separate field with. Offering elective courses, teachers thought was great. The 15-minute class length was great. Success, successful summer school experience based on the interactions with the students and the teachers. The teachers said they loved it, thought continued to have summer school opportunities for these middle school kids. Areas of improvement, and these are just suggestions, so this is kind of unfiltered in terms of what teachers observed during summer school. Passing time was too long, so clearly we're two-for-two there, so we're going to make the day a little bit more efficient. A need for a PE activity or some activity with the purpose of movement as well as socialization. So getting the kids together, and the intent with that was, you've got these K-8, multiple K-8 buildings in our district, you have a lot of kids who do not socialize with each other, and so giving them the opportunity to socialize with others. Let's see, addition of, which was the large group activity for socialization, registration process at their home school prior to the end of the school year, so selecting electives, confirming who was going to come, here are the dates, just better communication as those students finish up, solidifying kind of a registration process at the end of the school year. And then increased rigor for incoming ninth graders to earn credits, so starting, this summer school was based solely on students coming. That was our number-one goal, was we want students to walk through the door. Some of them can walk through with reluctance, but obviously 80% felt like it was a great experience. And so next year, increasing the rigor was one suggestion that teachers had. Could be based on the curriculum that they're going to deliver, but just talking about having the students academically earn their credit as well as due attendance. And then options for students to extend their learning for those who pick up concepts quickly so also in the classes, the curriculum being delivered, it was being delivered to the masses. And so there were students that picked things up quickly and students who needed some additional support, and so to be able to provide, as those students showed need, was a suggestion for moving forward. Any questions on the middle school?
Greg, how did you, how did students apply? How did you choose which? Because you said, I was really shuffling papers, but I believe you said many kids were asked to apply, so I'm curious, how did that go down?
So summer school was funded with Measure $98, and so it's dropout prevention. We were really targeting students who were performing below grade level or were at risk for being disconnected from school. That could be subjective through observations at buildings. Basically, we took the recommendation of leadership at the individual buildings, and who would benefit from this, knowing that we're targeting students below grade level, whether that's academics or social-emotional, or we're talking about students who are just showing a disconnect for school, like at some point their patience is going to run out, and they're going to drop out, or they're likely to drop out. And so we got a number of students, they tried to invite as many as they could, and then students basically said, "Yes, I'll come to summer school," and that was the list that we got.
So some of those kids that maybe were underperforming and just need a little push-up?
Yeah.
Equity.
Other questions?
So we had also, migrant ed also does their summer school at the high school, and that's not in this report, but I just thought of it when I'm talking. And they were in one hallway downstairs, and the middle school eighth and ninth graders were in and up in the other hallway upstairs in the B wing of the high school. And then the high school students were all over in the A wing. So we did really keep them separate, three separate summer schools. But we did do some exchanges with the migrant ed summer school. They had a few students who were older than the rest of them, and so we just incorporated, even though they were incoming seventh graders, we just incorporated them with incoming eighth graders so that they were separate.
Some of that was because of siblings, so they had a younger sibling that came to migrant school, and they were older, and so we could offer them some.
And then we also had our special education summer school there too, so we worked with them as well, and actually were able to get at least one of the kids into an aligned cohort with our middle school seventh grade. All worked together, I think that'll happen. So for the high school, obviously, we had the same format, the free breakfast and lunch, so we provided busing for any student who needed it at the middle school and high school. And at the high school, this was a credit recovery system, so again, with the Measure $98, we wanted to get them caught up and get them on the road to graduation. And the way that we did that was, and again, these are pass/fail classes because it is credit recovery. We had two computer labs set up. We had science and health in one computer lab, and language and social studies in another. And we had teachers, a teacher in each of those labs. And then math, just because of the way that they have their curriculum set up, they were in their own room, and all that the students had to do was pass the standards that they hadn't passed during the school year. So in the computer labs, they had to go through a semester class. But there, you know, there were a couple students who finished in the first week because they missed one standard that cost them to fail. And so they were like, "This isn't done." So that was one of the best comments that we got. Oh, that was, and then we got to say, "But if you just have it during the school year, you wouldn't do that." So that's how we had set it up. We had 76 we thought were coming. We had invited more than that, but we didn't get the paperwork back from them. The counselors at the high school were the ones who spoke with the students and filled out the paperwork and then let us know what they needed to take and if they were coming. So of the 76 that were supposed to be there, 70 showed up. We had the counselor who was working with the middle school students also made phone calls home. We made phone calls home, just trying to, you know, "Hey, don't forget, you've got this." And so that was not bad attendance. We earned 57 semester credits. And now 36 of the 70 that came are actually on track to graduate. So they, you know, and there were some kids who needed to earn a lot of credits to be on track, and so, you know, the 36 of them is actually better than zero. So we were really pleased with just the number of credits that students were able to earn throughout this. And they're still earning them. The computer programs, they're still, they can still work on them. There were several students who were given the message, "You need to meet with your counselor when you come back," and they can facilitate the test that you're going to need to take. They have to take the test there, but they can also work on the rest of it at home. So it's really, it's for them. So did a survey for them, too. There was a lot of one-on-one time with students, and we heard that from both the teachers and the students, that it was great that they could finally have somebody that would just sit and talk with them about their questions. For the online programs, if a student in the pre-test really did well on a standard, different standards, they didn't have to do that part of the online class because they proved by proficiency that they already understood it. So they could go through that, and it shortened the amount of time that they had to spend. Teachers really liked that they weren't really grading anything, although the math teacher was grading, but the computer program teacher only had to grade a little bit. Students, we set it up so that they could only work on one class at a time, so they really had to focus and they were able to just get all their attention there. Completing only the standards that were missed for math was very popular. We also gave them attendance premium. So we didn't say, "You will be in this chair from 8:00 till 1:15." What we said was, "Do you want to graduate? Because this is how we're going to help you graduate, and you need to be here." And we made phone calls, and we did all of that. But there were a couple that, the first couple of days, they blew out, you know, and then we're like, "Well, okay, how can we help you work on this another time then?" And then they started showing back up again. And so just giving them that little bit of freedom, some of these students need to feel like it's their decision that they're there. And so we had some great teachers who did that work with them and understood that's how they think. The students did work at their own pace, and we also had special education teachers there. We had three at job-share. There was always a special education teacher with our high school students, and so they can help, you know, negotiate, "How's this online program going to work with their IDP?" So they were all there for that. Suggestions for improvement, we did summer schools together for the first time. We're not sure how much the busing was going to cost or any of that, so we wanted to try to do this together as possible, but everybody agreed that probably summer school for the high school should start in June. You know, school, just start up again and get this stuff knocked out before the end of summer. Improving the structure of check-in and checkout, reevaluating the online programs, and they were doing that throughout the process of, you know, if this doesn't work and this does work. We were using the BYU online program and also Plato for classes. Modifying the time, a lot of our high school students said, "Oh, it's lunchtime, we're going to be done now." And so just setting it up, perhaps four and a half hours is a long time to sit in front of a computer. And so we talked about doing maybe a morning session and then afternoon session, or two morning sessions, and they can sit in for two hours, and they can sit in for four, but giving them that option, and then also working on it at home. And, I don't know, is there anything else on that?
I think so. I think it was a pretty positive experience in general. I was really impressed with the staff members that were there. We had some great teachers that helped some students make some really good progress, both at the middle school level and the high school level. Had a few classified folks that helped and supported. You know, all in all, it was a really good team effort by our staff members taking care of kids.
And it was nice that we could job-share. There were actually several of us that job-shared, just because...
Just the flexibility of, you know, I had mentioned one example, you know, first aid and art was a job-share, so students took one class for two weeks and the other class for two weeks, and the teacher was, you know, the teacher just came in, and then they just shared responsibility, worked out really, really well.
Good. Great. Yeah, thanks.
Just real quick, some feedback. I'm going to use Sarah Weitzman's Word of the Day, "Robust." I had a robust conversation with one of the parents, and their child actually had to participate, was replaced, for some math makeup. They were insufficient by two standards. And I think they said, "Within two, maybe three days, their child was done." And it was one of the best experiences that child has had in their young high school career, and it was something that just emphasized the excitement and zeal to want to now come back and have that renewed vigor, and was very excited about that. So, and that was offered free and clear. He just came up to me and just regushing about that. So I thought that was fantastic, so great feedback.
We definitely feel that more than a couple phone calls of parents checking on their child, like, "My son came home, and my daughter came home and says he's done," or "He's done." Can you confirm that?
I thought it was summer school. All summer, all summer, all day.
I mean, those were real phone calls.
Why is my kid's...
So maybe by the parent standard, a little bit disappointed.
Okay, obviously, then survey the parents.
All right, any more questions? All right, here are your guys, thank you. Greg, you have a stay.
I have a stay. Mark Twain Elementary School. So at this time in the, at this time in the school year, I, as I put together kind of a board report for Mark Twain, I wanted to talk a little bit about where we finished up last year and some of the great work that we did, and then kind of what this year looks like. And so I, obviously, I gave everything in the board report there, so hopefully you guys had a chance to take a peek at that ahead of time. But starting off with obviously some of the goals that we expect of all of our buildings, so we were very fortunate enough to have a 95% attendance rate at Mark Twain Elementary. In terms of reading, which is reported by STAR at the 40th percentile, which designates reading or on track to graduation for that district goal. Kinder was 83% at or above grade level, first grade was 67% at or above, and second grade was 79%. In math, in math, there is no kinder because their early lit test has some math components in it, but not very much. So it's mainly, early litters mainly a reading score. So in math, we have first grade at 87% and second grade at 83% when we finish the school year. A secondary success measure was predicted to pass SBA or proficient in standards. So STAR is, has a high, there's a high correlation at the 52nd percentile. Students that hit the 52nd percentile, there's a high correlation, they will pass SBA when required to take them at certain grade levels. Obviously, we don't have SBA currently in K-2 building. And so we set, we set 50, the 50th percentile, because that's what the computer program sets for us. And so in terms of reading, for the Mark Twain School as a whole, 69% are predicted to pass SBA. And then in math, 72% of our students are predicted to pass SBA. A couple of notables, and I shared these with staff. Staff does an amazing job. They had a great year last year. We made some, we made some master schedule decisions. We have some intervention. We have a number of things that we provide for students, and our teachers and our classified folks really deserve all of the credit. But a couple really notables to stand out. Number one is in reading, and this is the 2016-17 school year, so two years ago, that first grade class finished at 65% at or above grade level, so again, that's the 40th percentile. Last year, as second graders, they increased to 79%. So 79% of our second graders were at or above grade level, so that's a huge jump, something to be proud of. And then notables in math, two years ago, our second graders were 85%, and they actually increased that as third graders at Robert Frost last year to 91%. So there's roughly 100 kids, so only nine students in that class are below grade level, and at varying levels, so some of them may be 35th percentile or 30th percentile. So that group, that group made some great gains. A couple of thank-yous to, you know, to the school district and areas of focus for us as a building. You know, thank you for the fencing. We've got some security things that came into place at Mark Twain Elementary School, so we've got some fencing around the complex. And the gymnasium received some exterior siding project and new paint. And a Title I room was remodeled, so we have some new carpet and some paint, and there were some things moved to make that into a very usable fashion space for us. Security upgrades for the main entrance, which I know you guys have discussed as a school board as well, so really appreciate those upgrades at Mark Twain Elementary School. Areas of focus for us this year, the biggest one, and even though we have only been in school for a few days, the social-emotional learning curriculum, called a caring school community, has been outstanding. We are really focusing on implementing the structure and kind of the protocols for that program, and it really appears in just a few short days to be making a difference. The students are looking really, really good in terms of their social-emotional learning, self-regulation, social awareness, self-awareness, a number of those standards, so we're excited to see where that goes from here. We also are piloting a wellness program at Mark Twain. I spoke last year in the spring, and we talked a little bit about areas of need in our building, and one of the specific things was just the social-emotional learning skills or some of the limitations that more students are showing as they walk through our door. And so with that in mind, we put together a wellness room. We actually call it the Kit Den, and it is just a space where we teach kids what it feels like to be calm, in a very manner of speaking. So it's, you know, the lighting, the paint, the protocols for when students come in, the explicit instruction in social-emotional learning. It's a setup as an SEL intervention. So we have students that have gone through the process of being identified that they need an intervention, and so we are starting, we started off day one of an intervention specifically designed to address those students. We started off with 19 students in the first and second grade, because we had information on those students from last year. So 19 students, and then in addition to that, starting next week, we are, our counselors going into classrooms and providing guidance to all kindergarteners. So currently, we have 109 kindergarteners, and so that's where we're jumping in right now. We'll end up delivering guidance to all students in our building. We'll end up running that intervention as student needs arise. And I can tell you, just in, like I said, in just, you know, the few days that we've actually been in school, there is a noticeable... we've actually been in school, there is, there is a noticeable, though it may be subjective at this point, there is a noticeable feeling of, of calm, of students understanding and feeling a sense of calm in the building and maybe hopefully that helps translate to them that are self-regulating and being able to access their academics. We also had a training for our staff. One of the things that has popped up and I, and I wrote it down is unstructured time for students. So when a classroom goes to the restroom or a classroom walks down the hallway or goes to lunch or goes to recess, those are all unstructured times. And, and so during unstructured times, we have found obviously an increase in behaviors. And so we partnered with three other schools in the district, which, which I'm sure they will talk about when they give their reports as well. But we went to a Playworks, it's the name of a company and it specializes in recess supervision and structured play. And it had a lot to do with how you structure your playground, how you address students' behaviors, that you try to reinforce and things like that. So we, we have, we have seen more structure at our recess so far and it's carried over a little bit into our cafeteria. And so we're really excited to implement that as well at our, at our building. We're also piloting a couple of academic programs, Accelerated Math, Accelerated Reader are part of our, our district assessment with Renaissance Company provides a couple of those programs. And so we're piloting those and provide opportunities and interventions, additional practice and extensions for students. So not simply for students who are performing below grade level or identified as needing interventions, but also for some of those students who are possibly currently in the streaming process, for being talented and gifted, as well as students who are just performing, you know, performing above their peers or performing above what is, what is currently expected of a typical student at this time. So we're excited to see what those programs look like for us. And then moving, you know, moving into this school year, we've, we've adjusted goals just a little bit. We're obviously still sticking with our district goals of on-track to graduation, which for us is at or above grade level. So every child is our goal at the end of their second grade year at or above grade level in math and reading. And that simply means that when kids come in as kindergarteners or first graders, they may be, a kindergartner may come in at five years old and that, and he or she may be performing at third grade, or a third-year-old level. Other students may come in and be advanced at that age and may be performing at an eight-year-old level. So there can be a huge disparity. That is not the responsibility of the kindergarten teachers only to get them to grade level, you know, that could be, that could be a huge jump. And so what we, what we try to do is we try to say we want to give each child a year's worth of growth and anybody that's performing below grade level, as kindergarteners, the kindergarten team's responsibility is 33% of that catch-up growth that we follow. And then the first grade team picks up the next 33% and then the second grade team will pick up the last 33%. So that in theory, when children leave us at second grade, which is when they need to solidify their reading and math skills, they, they are on track to doing so. So for that reason, that's why that goal reads for second graders. And then 75% of our students on track to pass S-Back, so we're targeting, we're actually going to talk about our, when we do pull data in our, in our building, we're actually going to talk about taking a look at all of those students below the 52nd percentile and anybody that we may be able to provide an intervention for, or maybe they're having trouble with a specific concept, we want to make sure that we address that so we can help our students be on track to passing S-Back, which obviously is a measurement of success in our district. And then again, we want to hit that 95 attendance goal again this year. Those are just kind of a few things happening at Mark Twain Elementary School. We've been off to a great start. We've got some new faces in, on our staff, got some classified folks, we've got some teachers and everybody's doing an exceptional job. It's been a great start so far, so we're excited to, excited to get this year going. A little long-winded, but any questions you want to make?
I have a question. Last year, you implemented, I think it was something new, it was like a block reading program, you know, morning?
We did.
And you had like an hour and 45 minutes or two hours of reading slash center slash, a whole language arts essentially, is what I want to call it. How was that? I mean, clearly that was successful, it worked for your kids?
It was really, really outstanding. It was really successful. It was a two-hour uninterrupted reading block in the morning. It was modeled after some research done in the Kennelwick School District for their experienced exceptional members. So it worked so good, we went away from it.
But intended consequences?
What happened was, what happened was that reading block is great for typical kids. That reading block is great for students who have a level of self-regulation where they can sit in a classroom for two hours. Now granted, they're not being asked to sit in a desk for two hours and look straight ahead and don't move and, there's breaks in there, there's brain breaks in there. I mean, our teachers are very, very skilled in what they do. However, for a number of students who have difficulty self-regulating, it is, is pure torture. So, so what we have done is we have gone back to a secondary model in elementary school of, of a tiered system. And so everything, everything is very scripted where, for example, a reading block starts off with kinder reading block goes and they have whole group and then they go to time with assistants and then they have an intervention block. It's a 90-minute block of time. Students who are limited in self-regulation or who are performing potentially below grade level or that's how they're showing currently, instead of being asked to perform an independent task with no adult supervision, those students then can go to an intervention and be in front of another adult in a small group setting. And so what we're looking at is a system where we do it with kindergarten in a 30-month, 30-minute block of time and then we go to first grade and everything's tiered so that it just runs like clockwork. In the morning, we do reading, after lunch, we do math. And those students who have difficulty working independently, sustaining tasks, all of those things, they, they never are asked to do that. We don't ask children to do things that they are not showing the skills that they can do. And so they're always in front of an adult, they always have supervision, they always have guidance. So that helped us with a few challenges that we experienced last year. So that's the reason behind the change in the schedule. So hopefully the, the members continue to go. I'm confident they will. We've got, we've got a great team, we've got great staff, so I'm confident they'll be just fine.
Well, your reading went up, so it couldn't have been that bad.
No, that schedule last year...
It's tough to do that.
It was a two-hour reading block and we put every resource in the building in and it was, and it was great. And you can see the reading, the reading score went up significantly.
Right, yeah, but it's tough to do that. You were brave to do that.
It's challenging, but we did it.
Good, okay.
Other questions?
Good luck this year.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, Destin, Title, from Title I, Central Hall and Prattum Schools.
Okay, so for Title I, we are receiving about $445,000 for Title I services, which is a decrease of approximately $38,000. But hopefully, we've lost money because the economy has improved and our poverty index has decreased. We've continued to lose federal funds, but hopefully that's going to come to a halt because we're going to be in the economy so much. With that, it's a positive thing because again, fewer families are experiencing poverty, so our index goes down. Supplemental instruction in reading and math at our six schools, Mark Twain Elementary, Buick Creek, Robert Frost, Scott Smith, Silvercrest and Silverton Middle School. And all these allocations of the federal funds are based on the percentage of students who are eligible for free and reduced meals. I always remind people, that doesn't mean that they have to take lunch, they're just eligible for a free or reduced-priced meal. And our district average is 35.92. And you see, and I, I did show you in the, in the board report that I submitted to Debbie, 45.06 was our average in 2012-13 school year. So approximately 9-10% fewer, a decrease. And I did, I submitted this table so you could see the rank order was on board book. Any questions about Title I? Okay. So like Greg was saying, we didn't talk, we've had a very calm start to the school year. I know that it's just a little much, but it has been. You walk into classrooms and they're calm. We had open houses at both schools and they're calm. May I come back, I think in February and I'll let you know if the calmness remains. This, our, the two big things that we're working on are the caring school community curriculum, so the students can maximize their personal growth and then focusing on interventions for targeted students to maximize their individual growth. At Central Hall, we have 181 students, we've been around 175, but as of this morning, we're at 181. We only took two transfer students and that, those were at kindergarten. We're at 22 kindergarteners right now, we're going to be at 24, so we're going to advertise for two more spots. Last year at Central Hall, we had our best attendance ever. And we had 10% perfect attendance, but 81% of our students had 95% or better attendance. And usually we're around 71-72%. So that was a big improvement. And, but 94% of our students had 90% or better attendance. And that was also a good number. We had, Central Hall had their open house on the Thursday night of in-service week, so the 30th of August, and that goes really nicely. Parents come, it's kind of, we don't offer any food, but it's like a big family picnic. People just show up, they bring all their children's school supplies, they can get them in the desk, because the teachers there, classrooms are ready to go. And that works very smoothly. This year, all students at Central Hall have their own personal technology device. Grades one through eight have Chromebooks and all the kindergarteners have their own iPad to use. We are resuming band. It took a one-year off because when Tim Duffy left, he left towards the beginning of last year and it was really hard to get, to find somebody and get that rolling. So now we're going to have our first official after-school band, Tuesday the 24th. Erin Carey is going to be our band instructor. She gives individual music lessons to a variety of students in our district already. And parents, originally, parents signed up 12 students and they knew that it was going to be for $40 a month, which is quite a bargain. But now at Open House, Erin was there and 20 students signed up. So we should have, the goal is to have a Christmas program performance and get that band up and running. And several of the students are also participating in volleyball, but we're going to make all that work. We'll just massage everything, so it works out great. It's really nice that we're going to have 20 hours of a school counselor this year instead of four. That's going to be great. And we share that counseling position with Prattum. We did have 12 to 14 middle schoolers turn out for volleyball. We have Portland Opera to Go coming to Prattum and Central Hall. If you like the opera or you want to see something interesting, you should stop by Prattum and Central Hall on the 19th of October. It's about an hour-long performance. The Barber of Seville will be performed. Last summer at Central Hall, we completed a lot of big projects. This was the summer of painting interiors of classrooms, all over the school repainting interiors. Central Hall received a $1,500 grant from Northwest Farm Credit and we were planning to install some security cameras around the outside of Central Hall and in the gym for campus security. And hopefully we'll get that project kicked off soon. That was a real priority when we, when we had the issues with strangers coming onto campus from behind the gym. And then we were fortunate enough to be able to finish the fencing around our entire campus. Our parent club, really would like to get a camera on the backside of the gym, so we're going to get that done along with that grant and we'll hopefully be able to kick in a little bit of money as a school. And, and then someday, when our school district is able to get security cameras into all of our schools and we're hooked up on a networked DVR system, NVR, then those cameras, the plan is to have those cameras just directly tied into that system. So we're not doing anything that we're going to have to abandon once that system comes on board someday. We do really appreciate the fencing. It's very nice to be able to just send kids out. It, you know, fencing doesn't prevent a whole lot, but it's, it gives everybody a really positive feeling about campus security. And it is nice that everybody's just nice and contained out there in the play yard. We are due to receive a new swing set tomorrow. Hopefully that will happen. That's the plan. And the bus loop, if you've driven by Central Hall, the bus loop that, that several parents in K and E put in last year, last spring, works very well. It has opened up many, many new parking spaces along Halpry Road at Central Hall School. Any questions about Central Hall?
I have a question. What do you think contributed to the increased attendance at Central Hall?
I think the main thing was just reminding parents to, that it's important that their children are at school. I periodically, probably three or 40 times a year, I'll give them attendance statistics and they just kept going up and up and up and up. So I think over time, especially since we started to make a real effort in our school district about attendance three, four, five years ago, that just putting that in front of people's eyes all the time, whether it's emails or voicemails, has been the biggest thing that's helped our attendance improve. Anything else for Central Hall?
So you're resuming band?
Yes.
Okay. And what is different about this band as when Mr. Duffy was there?
Uh, nothing.
Oh, nothing, it's the same?
Nothing, it's the same.
So he was after school?
We just had difficulty finding someone to do it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, worked perfectly.
So he was after school, oh, great.
He was a teacher in the district and he just extended his day at several of our schools.
Oh, okay.
But that, that was the thing, just finding someone. We asked several people, but either they didn't, they felt like they were more into vocal music and non-instrumental, so...
Right.
But hopefully this is going to work great for several years.
Thanks for the clarification, thanks.
Prattum. Prattum has 75 students in grades one through eight. Last year's, Prattum's attendance is always good, year after year. It's always, it doesn't seem to fluctuate much. We did take 9% perfect attendance and 69% of our students have 95% or better attendance, but 97% of our students had 90% or better attendance. So that's really good. We had our open house on Thursday the 6th, which is a little bit earlier for Prattum than usual. Usually, we're in the second or third week, but it was, again, it was a very calm thing. Had a nice parent club meeting after that open house. It went about 30 minutes. And, you know, when your student is in a classroom for three years, third through fifth, and three years, sixth through eighth, and you've already been there with multiple children over the years, you know, you don't have to run as long as open house time as you would at other schools. So open house is quick, then you get them in the gym, the parent club meeting. They're extremely generous parent club at both Central Hall and Prattum. We took in eight transfer students, so in the first grade. One student came from the Central Hall kindergarten back to Prattum, but we had to backfill with eight transfers. But we had lots of kids interested in coming to Prattum School, so that really wasn't a problem. Prattum and Evergreen combined for volleyball and basketball, and that's a really nice combination. Evergreen obviously doesn't have a gym and Victor Pointe has so many athletes on their athletic teams, they don't need extra students from Evergreen, so it's a perfect match. We have Destiny Sandlin, a former SHS athlete, is our volleyball coach and she's really excited and she has about 14 students turning out. Ben Johnson, a community member in Prattum, in cooperation with our district, is ready to begin adding on to the west side of the gym and proposing an addition of restrooms, seating area for games and a foyer and a concession area. However, the cost of construction has gone crazy because there's so much business out there. The project has been pared back to a $350,000 project. Apparently, when there was a plan of a kitchen area and a stage and storage, it was about 1.2 million, but it's been ratcheted back to 350,000, which the goal is, he, he has children in our school, I think he said for five more years, so his goal is to accomplish that task. And it can't... that task, and it can't be from a single donor, it has to be from multiple funding sources. But hopefully, Prattum School will benefit from the completion of that project someday. Any questions about Prattum?
Destiny, where did the eight transfers, where did, do you know where they came from? Were they?
Mostly Salem.
Mostly Salem?
Yeah.
What's the percentage of kids out there that are from the Silverton area for Prattum?
You mean Silverton in town? Or Silver Falls School District residents?
Silver Falls School District residents.
Probably about 65, 70%.
Okay. Any questions for Destiny?
Good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, board reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share? Okay, moving on. This is our second audience with visitors, limited discussion and action items. Would you like to address the board?
I know you guys wanna get home, why don't you? But I would like you to revisit your discussion about audience with visitors. I think the examples tonight, we have three people that wanted to present their board right off the bat this evening, had nothing to do with any of the agenda items, and I believe two of them left right away. So they wanted to come in, they wanted to speak, and get out here versus sitting and listening to discussion, and remember, they're concerned with support. And there's people like me, I wasn't planning to speak at all, but here I am, speaking after your discussion, so take that into consideration, please.
Thank you.
Sarah White, from Silverton, speaking on behalf of myself. Wally basically just said exactly what I was gonna say, but I had a couple other thoughts. One, many of you know my dad, Ray Cizer, and I'm daughter of the school board member, so I've been versed for many, many years on the fact that when a public comment goes to the school board as elected officials, that you're here to listen to the public, and that, and I know that doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna give any feedback back, and so, not everybody knows that, but I appreciated your robust discussion. And I also would make the comment that over the past three years or so, I've really appreciated that there's been much improvement of at least just saying thank you, and so I think that's really often what people just wanna hear is thanks, you know, I heard you. But what struck me interesting was the word efficient. You guys were talking about trying to make your meetings more efficient, and that confused me, and I failed to see the reason why eliminating an audience with visitors, because we're your public, and you're our elected officials, and we're our, we are your constituents, why that should affect your efficiency in your meetings, and so, and I agree completely with what Wally said. There's people who wanna come and say something and leave, and even if you're a few minutes late, you have that time for the kid, the high school representatives, and the consent agenda, so you still have leeway minutes, but if you note the time, it's 9:11, when we started second audience with visitors, so eliminating that first one would really, you know, if you have time like I do, and I'm babysitting tonight, I can speak to the second audience with visitors. The exact same thing with Wally, I didn't plan on speaking to the second audience with visitors, but also, I think that if you did like a review of like maybe the last two years, you might note the trend, that you don't always have people that speak to you as second audience, but you also have people who speak specific to those action items, and that they come and wait to speak specific to action items. So you could maybe do your own overview, really, of, you know, how many public comments you get, because I think ultimately, if you're thinking about efficiency, I don't think that squelching the public is the way to go, because you want to be able to hear the public, because that's why we elected you. And that was all my comments, so, thank you, and I appreciated your discussion on it, but I hope that you'll keep both of it. Oh, that was the thing is, if you do choose to eliminate one, I would think that you might have to make that an action item possibly, or not, because it's, I don't know. You guys discussed it and thought, oh, we're gonna eliminate a public comment.
I guess I, yeah, I think that would, I think that would just be up to me, as I said to the agenda.
Okay, cool. Well, then, Tom, I urge you to please consider removing both of the audience.
Thank you.
Here we are again. Yeah, Frank showed up, so I wanted to have a chance to introduce himself real quick, but we're just, hey, this is Frank. As we were going through a couple of the items on your agenda, we just had a couple of clarifying points that we'd like to bring up, things to ask you to reconsider. In looking at your communication agreement between the superintendent and the school district board, first of all, based on our proposal to you earlier, if you were to agree to this tonight, that would basically negate your opportunity to look into our proposal, because there are a couple items in your communication agreement that would limit your ability to communicate with employees openly. So first, I would ask you to reconsider approving this tonight, until you have a chance to look into the proposal, the proposal that we made earlier.
Can you ask, um, thanks?
Yeah, yeah, which points, yeah.
So point number one, and point number six, both limit your ability to communicate with employees under your communication agreements.
Okay.
Sorry. Number one and number six. In addition, in looking at the language in number one, we would like to propose a change in language, making a distinction between a district employee and a district employee acting on behalf of the union, because under the equity principle, which is a fundamental piece of the American labor law, we actually are not approaching you currently as employees, we are approaching you as union representatives of your employees. And because of the equity principle, we are actually on equal footing with our administrators when we're wearing our union hats, and so I would like for you to consider a language change to that, distinguishing between how you interact with an employee and how you interact with members of union leadership. And finally, on section six, or point six there, the last line, which you guys deliberated about for a while, and I'd like to clarify to make sure that I got your change in language correctly. It says, what I recorded you as change in language to is, the board supports the school administration before community groups and individuals. Is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So from the perspective of the SFBA and the perspective of teachers, this language makes it very apparent that your ability to be objective in an appellate position as a body that grievances are brought up to is limited, if you include that language. So the intent may not be that you will put admin above your teachers, above other members of the community, but that is what it suggests. So as a group of people who we will be bringing grievances to, and who have to make those decisions, if you include this language, it appears that you are going to be biased against your teachers. And so we would like to consider striking that language from this agreement, or at least reconsidering how that appears, and retaining your position of objectivity.
Mr. Jeff?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Jennifer.
I was just gonna say that I, we've already agreed to a version of this.
Yeah.
That's correct, right? But number six would be a change. So number one, we won't, is, this is something that we've kind of re-upped every year.
Right.
Number one is something we're currently working under. That's our current agreement. Number six is something that we're gonna change, though, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can change it. We, yeah, these were the, these were the considered changes suggested by Renee from our last board meeting. I'm quite sure we can change it, and we wanted to.
I think because we haven't actually voted on it as an action item, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we can, we have that latitude and flexibility to change what we feel, yeah, it doesn't matter what Renee told us or not, that's her, that's her.
These are just her suggestions.
Her suggestions, correct, that we can make that.
Tom, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm thinking to your point about number one, about, this is, the title of the document is a working agreement amongst board members and between the Silver Falls School District Board and Superintendent Andy Belando, wherein that's the premise of the document. Number one seems to imply not an exclusion of being able to discuss anything with you, but rather, as you would have come to us as an employee, you wouldn't have the ability to do that, we would communicate with Mr. Belando. It would seem to me that, and Andy or anybody, correct me if I'm wrong, it would not seem to preclude the idea of this working group that you're proposing. Anybody see that differently? I mean, maybe I'm misreading.
I think you're gonna have to give some attorney input on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I really do believe there are some limitations to doing so, and again, when you think about the roles and responsibility of a school board, you are not managers. The proposal was for manager labor, you are governing body, your managers are sitting on the side of the room. And so from that perspective, again, I'm not an attorney without legal advice, this is a new proposal to me, I hadn't heard it before, so we'll surely get some direction on that, but when I look at it on its face value as a management and labor committee, that's not the role of a school board, that's not your governing body, your managers are here and over there.
Yeah, I mean, if we were to decide to do something that was in conflict with the working agreement, we could amend the working agreement, you know, but I don't see us ever, I mean, I, I don't take this for, to Jonathan's point, I mean, I don't think it stops us from doing anything.
The working agreement would not stop you from doing that, it's, again, it's an agreement between seven of you with each other, in repeat, and it doesn't trump policy, it doesn't trump the law. Most of this is based upon policy, based upon the law, and not all of it, so, there's even some reference to policies on there. So from that perspective, I think it's up to you about what you wanna include or not include in it, but it's, you take action on it as a show of commitment to the working agreement, but action is not legislative, it's not policy.
Can I respond to John's question to me? So in regard to how this impacts us in our communication with you, when we initially set out to communicate with each of you, and we alerted Mr. Belando and Ms. Stevens to our intentions, this document was sent to us by Mr. Belando to inform us as to practice in regard to communication with school board members. So to me, that suggests that we are being told that we are employees of the school district, and this is how we are to communicate with the board, and so I would just like to see that there's a distinction there between the union and employee with an issue.
So one thing I will say is, we haven't had, well, in my one year, we haven't had union representatives come to a meeting ever. So this is something new for me, when, in regards to, you know, language and policy and the law, and, you know, I would, I would feel better if I was more educated on what language is required in this for having a working agreement with our superintendent, and what language is just suggested for our district. There's a big difference, because, you know, of course, we need to have what's mandated for sure, but what language is that, and what language was molded to our district or our relationship with our superintendent? I think that's something that I would feel more comfortable knowing the distinction, I suppose, because there are, I don't know.
We're getting, I think we're getting weeds on this one.
Yeah, what's the problem with number one, again? I don't.
We're getting weeds?
No, this, we're getting into weeds, we're, we're opening up a can of worms where...
Into the weeds? Well, we have, we have people here who are...
Every, every basket.
Hold on, let's have a conversation at a time.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, so, Tim, why don't you, why don't you guys have yours, and then you guys can, Tim, you asked a question about number one.
Yeah. Number one, it says that staff members, students, parents, and community members need to communicate to the board through the superintendent. Is that correct?
That's your policy, that's their policy.
Exactly, exactly. So we just want to make the distinction that when we come as representatives of the union, that doesn't include us anymore. So when we would like to speak with you as representatives of the union, we are not employees, and we are representing, and that's where the labor piece comes in. Forum hasn't really given us the opportunity ever to have a direct link, either to board members or to policies being made. Well, I think that we, our advice from OSBA is not to meet individually.
Absolutely.
And so, yeah, we use it for members, I just meant it as a collective.
And that more than three is a public meeting, and, yeah.
Right, and I don't, and I guess I'm, maybe I, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm understanding your concern right, but this, but number one doesn't stop you from what you just did tonight, you put on your union hat, and you're communicating with us.
Okay.
So I don't see, I don't see where that's, where the problem is.
So do you, so, okay, so then it goes back to the specificity of, if you retain this language and go forward with it, then that, again, will kind of, that will be limiting to our ability to...
So that it doesn't, so that's why no staff members and whatever, community members are involved.
I think one is, one is okay now that we've clarified.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's fine, we're just asking a question, that's good, so, yeah, okay.
So with number six, the biggest concern is that the administration is given support before anything, that really sounds like there's some bias.
See, I don't read, I don't read it as that, I read this, I read this, and I think the intent of this was that school board members aren't gonna be out in public trashing Andy or trashing Dandy, that if we have a problem with something they've done, we take it directly to them.
Right.
And I think this, I think that's what, to me, that's what this is addressing, that we're not gonna be, that we're not gonna be, that we're gonna support administration when we're out in public, we're not, if we have a problem with them, we bring it to them directly, instead of talking behind their back out in public. That's, I always thought that's the intent of number six, of what number six is saying.
So we would appreciate clarification in the language, that states in public or...
Well, that's what it says, before community groups and individuals. I don't know how much more clear it can be, really.
Individuals could mean anything, it could be, it could mean someone with agreements coming before you.
Well, we're not allowed to talk about grievances to individuals.
You know, my concern, you know, and my concern to you, Tim, right now, is the group that you're speaking to me, you're assuming my actions. You're already gonna assume how I'm gonna respond or perform based on a document, really, which is all-inclusive, so I'm a little bit concerned that you're already telling me how you think I'm gonna respond.
I don't think that's what we're doing.
But that's, now that's how you are saying, that's your interpretation, this is how I interpret your actions.
Okay.
See, we're limited by law. See, we're limited by law in what we can, what we can even talk about. We can't, if there's agreements, we can't, we can't talk to you guys about that. We can't talk to teachers about that. We can't, you know, there's, this is just, this is between us and Andy.
Okay, so do you, do you understand how we feel, though, when we get told that we can't talk unless it goes through the superintendent? And then the version that is coming to you is not necessarily coming directly from us.
Are you talking about as employees, as teachers, or as a union?
A bit of both. I, you know, yes, we're here as our union hats. But when we first got this information that we couldn't speak with you, it was, it felt bad, it felt really bad. And the impression that, with a lot of members, was you're not approachable to us. Now, I don't agree with that completely because we're here and you're listening, and I feel like you're hearing this. And if the wording is just about your relationship with Andy and how you two interact together outside of what we do, that's good. But my concern is when Andy is representing staff that come to the union with issues and he's representing the staff in one way to you, that's where we're wondering if that, if that indicates there might be some bias. Not saying that there is, but we've just been told we can't talk to you.
No, and I think, that's not the issue. It's the format by which communication is shared. So what was stated was that instead of a individual conversation one-on-one, the proper format is exactly what you're doing here so we all can participate at the same time and hear the exact same message. Otherwise, if I hear a message solo, and each individual message by the board members, we don't have unity. We'll hear something a little bit different, we'll interpret that differently. So what you're doing right now is the proper format. So that's, that's what was conveyed to you.
And we just wanna clarify, we're not coming before you trying to be difficult, trying to cast stones or anything like that. We are trying to fulfill our goals of advocating for our membership and relaying to you things that we have heard from people and trying to open this avenue of communication for the voices of teachers being heard. And that these were our interpretations of your policy. And so wanting to get out what people may interpret your policy as, so, thank you for listening.
I think, I think one thing around this whole communication piece, one thing that, that sometimes gets, I don't know if it gets misconstrued or what, but anyway, we, we, in our, in our trainings and things like that, we're directed, you know, and say, say I'm in your building and the teacher comes to me with a concern, it's not my job to try to solve that concern. It's, that's why I take it to, you know, I take it to the superintendent, I take it to Andy, and I think that's what part of this is discussing, that communication from a board member needs to go through the channels, the same as everything else.
With staff members, is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah. Because I don't, and I've never thought of this as staff members can't, can't come to a board member with a concern, but the board member is the one that has to be careful with how they, how they respond to that and how they, and how they, where they take that. And that has, that's the part that has to go through the channels. And I guess I've always felt that way, that, and usually when I, if I'm out somewhere and hear something, I will, I'll call Andy and say, hey, I heard this, and, you know, I don't know if I'm making any sense, but...
No, you are.
I don't think anybody's trying to shut, shut you guys down. A lot of it is how, how the board is supposed to respond to stuff like that. And that's why some of the language sounds the way it does, but...
Well, and I guess, and I appreciate that. And expect us to ask lots of questions or to look at things and ask questions about it because we wanna know. We want to know what the intent is, we want to know how it could affect us, and we have to be honest in our representation to our membership. And so that is our goal. Our goal is to make sure that we're understanding these when they come through and it's voted on and somebody comes to us and says, but this is Andy's right all the time. Because they might interpret that just because you're first. Well, then I can go back and say, well, this is what it means, is that things have to go through channels and this is where they go for clarification. So expect us to ask lots of questions. Don't you plan on being, we're not every meeting.
And that's a good, and that's a good question. The supports does not mean Andy's right all the time.
Right.
It does not mean that.
Right, and I'm just taking the three steps back to the people that have just worked 10 hours with two-year-olds or second graders, they're still wetting their pants.
Sure.
If I might add something, sorry, because I just came in, I'm sorry. It was that marking man practicing, came in and tried to get all this down. I think one of our goals is, what, I wanna speak to what Tim said, is that when he comes in and he speaks to, someone, if someone comes up to him and Tim says, this is what's happening, I think that's what we're trying to kind of ward off because we don't want you as the board to be taken and given all that information like to individuals. That's what we're, our goal is say, we're here, we wanna be the voices for those people. We wanna be able to have a connection and have that communication open. So there's no, there's, so there is transparency to that and we can kind of go through that with our members as well and kind of work through that before they feel like they have to come to you. So we're trying to keep, leave those little individual things, kind of bring together and we can take and be able to address that as an association and then be able to bring that to you. So I hope, hope you understand that that's our goal is to create a just a better communication through that and maybe be able to represent them in a better way. And at least for us, we're trying to let them feel like they have a voice. And so hopefully that will help.
And also, but also, and I'm not trying to discourage anything, but also remember the piece that we're not, we're not managers.
Right.
We set policy. You know, and a lot of, a lot of concerns that you guys have might, might be out of our scope. It might be, you know, what these guys are supposed to be dealing with. And you know, I mean, I know you already know that, but for the public also, you know, that's something that, that's very important because a lot of times those lines kind of get, start, you know, start to get crossed a little bit. And that's why, that's why OSBA recommends that board members don't meet individually with union leadership because of that.
Oh, absolutely.
And because of some of the stuff that can happen.
Well, you need...
The consequences of some of that stuff, so...
But in your role as policy centers, you also need to be able to have an avenue where you hear from the people who are affected by your policy. So that's, again, where we want to make sure that our teachers' voices are heard.
If it's things that apply to our role, yeah, yeah, for sure.
I'm talking like, like district policy or...
Yeah. Ron, you have something you learned?
Well, yeah, I just wanna say, and also a little more clarification for number six, too. And it was partly, this was also part of the concern for transparency. You know, there's a lot of folks that were in the community that wanted to see a little more transparency. So what we're trying to do is consolidate the voice. So instead of random discourse, we have continuity and then one voice, which helps folks really understand what that message is. So, and that's all part of it, too. So even though maybe for your specific piece, it may not fit for maybe what your understanding was, but it really was intended for a broad scope for the entire community. So a lot of language here is for the community.
Yeah, I think we've...
And most, most of the language in this is, a lot of it is to keep board members in check, too. I mean, I'm serious about that. The last few years, we've had issues where board members have, you know, not been supportive of administration in public. And so a lot of, a lot of this is, I mean, this is really just between him and us and to keep board members in check and keep, you know, our roles defined, so... But I get where you guys are coming from.
Yeah, I hear your concerns.
And we just want you to know that we'll be here and we'll be listening and making comments on that we wanna be part of this. We wanna hear what you're doing and wanna be able to keep our membership informed. And, you know, if we can send messages back, we'd love to be that person or that group that can help with those kind of messages to staff members.
Well, really quick, when you brought up number one and number six, the last sentence in number six is kind of similar to number one. I mean, it's just, you know, enforcing it even more. So really, we don't even need that last line in number six 'cause number one covers it pretty well for the board members' relationship with the superintendent. But I didn't even, I didn't even connect the two until you guys brought it up and I read it over and over and I'm like, well, it's clearly states, basically, everybody in the community that, you know, board members will communicate directly with the superintendent by a staff member, student parent, or community member. I mean, that's pretty much everybody in the, in the city. So really, we don't even need the last sentence in number six.
I disagree, Shelley, because the last sentence in number six talks, more addresses board members, for lack of a better word, trashing the superintendent in public.
It's, it's the same thing that in number one.
I don't read it as the same thing.
It's the, you know, you're, you're just, I mean, it, I'm just, I'm just, what I'm reading in interpretation, that's just what I'm doing. And, I mean...
Well, we did ask Renee about that. We asked her because this was something that was in the standards, the board self-evaluation standards. And that was a question, is that was that somewhere in our working agreement? And she didn't, she said, no, it's not, so...
She said what was not?
The bit about supporting school administration before community and individuals.
It's not what?
That it wasn't, it's part of the standards, but it wasn't yet part of our working agreement.
Oh, that was her, okay. It wasn't a part of, I see, okay.
Interpretation.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, no, that's fine, I, that's, I'm just...
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm not sure, really.
No, thank you.
Okay, so if we're gonna take action on this, how do I bring it up with our edits?
I think it's up to the board member to make a motion.
To bring, make the motion with Renee's, with Renee's edits?
Yes.
Plus, well, now our edits, so I guess, let's see.
The one edit.
Oh, one edit, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So, my question is, if we approve this as edited tonight and we find out in a week that it precludes the proposal they've made, if we were so inclined to entertain it, can we turn around and change it again quickly or is there a problem?
I don't read that it precludes it, but...
Can I chime into that?
Yes, yes, please do, Andy.
This is not policy, Jonathan, this is a working agreement. And I, I think if there's, there's anything that the law would preclude you from being able to do, then that would be what you're not doing, regardless of a reference in this. If a law required an adaption of policy or, my first, I suppose, then you'd have to do that. But, you know, I, again, I haven't heard of the equity principle before, that's new. And we'll surely look into that and get some feedback to the board about what that means. And we'll also be seeking some OSBA reference. I hope Michelle will send me the reference that she has to other school districts that have multiple board members that contribute. And we'll, we'll get this, get some information.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we'll, I mean, we'll gather information and look at the proposal, but I, I mean, I was a Jedi maid, I would assume that if the board wanted to entertain the proposal, we'd go forward. And Andy said, no, it's in senior working here, you can't. I don't think that's gonna go well for Andy.
No.
I think he'd be fine.
Yeah, I think if we wanted to form a committee, we could.
So, okay, that answers, any more questions?
That answers my question.
Okay. All right, okay, let's, any more audience with visitors?
I just wanted to say something really quickly.
Okay.
My name is Eliza Twillan and I just was listening to the reports tonight on the summer school and the importance of the electives to those students to attend school. And I get really frustrated all the time because I feel like so much about reading and math is a part of my daily life that also is a creative life. And it frustrates me that so many students lose interest in education. I personally loved school and my brother didn't. And he dropped out at 16 and I continued on through college. And I feel like I still am always trying to learn and I enjoy reading and I use math all the time. And I just wanted to say that I would just love if you guys can encourage policy that encourages crossover learning, you know, because I feel like things like music and art and CTE can also include things like math and learning to write. You could easily work on creative writing skills that also help you work on your social-emotional learning structure. And I think that there's a lot of ways that I see in the lowest grades especially, I see that implemented in kindergarten, first, second, up to third grade. And then after that, I start to see that changing away into more of these categories where we're really focused on whether or not kids can read and do math. And I personally think that all of those things can be done with that very body. I just wanted to shout out.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to action items. Okay, so our first action item is the 2018-19 Board Superintendent Working Agreement. Does anybody have a motion?
I move to adopt the working agreement amongst board members and between the Silver Falls School District Board and Superintendent Andy Belando for the 2018-2019 school year, including the language for number six that reads, "The board supports the school administration before community groups and individuals," period.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
All right, we have motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we got the district goals and we had, it started off with three goals and I think we, by consensus, we edited down to two. So do I have a, have a motion?
Blue for approval, goals one and three.
Yeah. Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, we have motion and a second, any discussion?
I just wanna clarify that we're not, we're not doing number two. It's been deleted out.
Right, as a... As a goal, we're just gonna, we're just gonna handle it in regular, just as regular business.
Just as regular, okay, okay. So the, the public comment card and all of that is not included in this?
It's not included, it's all, no.
Okay, so, okay, just wanted to clarify that, okay?
Okay, any more discussion?
Oh, and one other thing, taking out the two audience with visitors, that's not included in that?
That's not included in that.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's for, up for discussion.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, okay, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, thanks for coming, reading adjourned.